Do it, do you recall our civil engineer, James Thayon, he's previously been sworn.
Yes.
Qualified.
Yes.
If Mr. Warner wants, he can remind him he's still under oath.
Yes, I'm going to do that.
We'll both remind him he's still under oath.
Mr. Warner doesn't have to do it because it was just done for Mr. Warner and maybe counsel will also have the witness reconfirm that his license remains in good standing.
Yes, because it's still remaining in good standing, Mr. Warner, since we were here last.
You have the mic?
Sorry, there's a broadcast problem, so yes.
That's okay. One second, because we need to give you the microphone. We have a member of the public here, if you want to move that a little bit.
We'd like to see it, you know?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
And also move it.
Is that good, should we go back a little bit further?
Back a little bit too, because right now you're blocking, okay.
Maybe back and to the left.
There you go.
Can everybody see that? Okay.
Good evening, everyone. I acknowledge that I am still under oath and my license is still in good standing.
Good for you.
So, as part of our resubmission, the first thing I'd like to do is mark an exhibit, I believe this is Exhibit 8-3.
That's what we're up to here.
So this is a colorized rendering of the site layout plan that was submitted as part of the recent resubmission, with landscaping superimposed, so you can get an idea of what it would look like from a view from above. North is still oriented top of the page, Valley Road on the top of the page, Plainfield Road on the bottom of the page, and in the center of the page is the Taco Bell building with the tan shaded coloring.
And if you could just give us the last revised date again?
Yes, the last revised date is May 15th, 2023.
Thank you.
So what this exhibit is intended to do is just show some of the highlights or the changes that were made. And one of those is at the southeastern corner of the building, you'll see that we've added supplemental landscaping where there is a gap in landscaping, which is one of the comments and suggestions of the board. In addition to that, as Mr. Wichescola pointed out, we added a five-foot-high board-on-board fence along the property line that shared with the Burger King operator along the east of the Taco Bell drive-through. In addition to that, as part of the resubmission and as asked for at the last hearing, we modeled the existing lighting that existed as part of the Bank of America throughout the site, and in doing so, were able to confirm that there are no existing, or there are no non-conformities, variances, or waivers associated with the lighting, other than what we had already originally requested, which is to keep the lights on from dusk till dawn from a site safety perspective. We also, as part of comments received at the last hearing, modeled the existing and proposed stormwater management basin based on the additional impervious coverage that was added. We did so in conjunction with how the site currently flows and functions to the existing basin along Valley Road, and again, were able to confirm that there are no issues with that. We meet the existing rate of runoff or reduce it slightly for the 100-year storm event. Then, as it relates to signage, one of the comments came at the last hearing as part of one of your board professionals' comment letters that on Plainfield Road, we proposed a directional sign. We've increased the height of that sign to three feet, which we believe is prototypical. There is a concern of potential visibility of that sign, and so we made it a little bit taller in order to make it a little bit more visible in that location. Also, as it relates to signage, there was conversation along Valley Road about the monument sign that was proposed in that location and the look of it and the aesthetics. So what we did was we proposed what we hope the board would view as a more aesthetically pleasing sign. This is part, I'm going to refer to a detail sheet that is part of the submitted set. Would you like this to be marked?
When you say submitted, if I may, Mr. Chairman, when you say submitted set, the one from more than 10 days ago, the original one, or the one from less than 10 days ago?
The one that's exactly from 10 days ago.
Oh, it's exactly from 10 days, why don't we mark it, can't hurt. Rule of thumb is 10 days or more, you don't have to mark it. So A4, it'll just be the one page?
Correct, so A4 is referring to Sheet C-902 of the submitted site plan set, last revised May 15th, 2023. I'm referring to the Detail 5, that's on the bottom right-hand corner there, which is showing, we are still intending on proposing a compliant square footage and height monument sign. We believe, or would hope, the board would agree that this is more attractive than what was originally proposed. Essentially, we were originally, to refresh memories, going to keep the existing sign out there and reface that with a Taco Bell logo and branding. Now instead, what we're going to do is get rid of that sign, and we're instead going to propose a monument sign, which is going to be on a brick base with the Taco Bell logo and uplighting, which is customary and similar to what's in the area today.
And what is the material that it's made out of?
It's plastic, so we would still be requesting the variance, or I believe, is it a variance or waiver? From last time, variance, thank you, which requires the signs to be carved of wooden base.
Is there any reason why that can't be either wooden or some other material that looks more like wood than plastic?
So, we're using signs that Taco Bell has readily available, which are plastic, and we believe for a long-term maintenance perspective would be more viable to maintain them over time.
Well, you know what I mean by the signs that are not wood, but they're not plastic? They're, if you see, Valley Auto has one on theirs, it's kind of like a carved styrofoam type thing or material. It looks just like wood when you look at it, but it looks, it has that carved look to it.
I'm not familiar with those types of signs.
If you...
The Burger King sign even though?
The Burger King sign, I think, is wood.
Walgreens is a good example of what you're talking about.
Yes, the Walgreens sign, yeah. But the Valley Auto down here, just a little ways down on the left, has a sign that, if you look at it real quick, you think it's wood, but it isn't. It's more of a, like, artificial material, but it looks more, it looks like it's carved. And it doesn't look like, it's not plastic. But I, that, you don't have any color versions of your sign or any actual photographs of what it would look like besides the drawing?
No, that's, that's all we have at this time. So, we hear the comment, you're going to hear some additional testimony from the professional planner in a little bit.
What's the size of the wood sign that's there now that you were originally proposing to reface?
It's not a wood sign, it actually was a plastic sign.
Okay.
And interiorly, it was interior lit, right?
No, it was externally lit?
Also externally lit. It was a sign box with the Bank of America panels, which was...
Right, the panels.
And that's what we were originally looking to do, is just to replace the panels with the Taco Bell, and we came up with this design with a, with a brick base.
But what's the size difference?
It's 15.83 square feet in the existing conditions, we're proposing it at 16 square feet, which is compliant with code. I will note that the existing sign is six feet tall, whereas the sign they're proposing here is actually five feet tall. It's a little bit shorter.
Adam, sorry, uplighting or downlighting?
It'll be up.
Did we talk a little bit about, we have signs here that are downlit, or it doesn't matter?
We have signs that have things coming like this, and also, I think there's some there uplit too.
Burger King is uplit.
My recollection from our planner last meeting was that we do not require downlighting in our organs.
That is correct, Mr. Aronia.
That was the direction from, I've been on the planning board for years and through this board, that I think it's optimal to have downlighting for many reasons. My understanding is that we're trying to go away from uplit sign pollution for a while. Light pollution is just one reason, but to also contain the light to the property for both risk and other reasons.
After confirming with my client, we'd be happy to do a downlit sign.
Okay. That's easy.
So then, lastly, what changed?
James, just, so, can I, we have a member of the public here, just regarding the fencing on the property line, can we just show what the nature extent of that is, or have you said it's along the line?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So referring back to Exhibit A3, the fence starts at the southeastern corner of the property, essentially lined up with where the parking spaces are in that location, but on the Taco Bell lot, and it terminates at the projection of the building line across.
And it's made out of what?
It's a board-on-board wood fence.
Wood fence?
Yes.
How is the maintenance of that going to be handled? Because those fences need to be restained or maintained, because they dry out and they could fall apart. That's going to be a regular maintenance issue?
Yes. It won't be a maintenance issue, but it will be properly maintained.
Maintenance schedule, where people are going to maintain that. Because, you know, we've all seen those wooden fences that they fall, you know, the nails dry out or the wood dries out and they fall over, you know, that's... Was any thought given to using any of the material besides wood on the fence?
We chose a wood fence because we think it blends in with the aesthetic. Typically, a vinyl fence is kind of pops, we want it to buffer the site and not, you know, exploit the fence itself, hence why we chose wood. So, lastly, of what changed, part of the submission, we made some modifications to what was characterized as wall art. So I'm referring now to the, again, these are part of what was submitted, the proposed elevations SK-3 by Zelta Design, last revised...
Exhibit A5.
Exhibit A5, so it's last revised May 17th, 2023. On the top of the page of SK-3, you're looking at the visual behind the building. And so essentially, what was done was the wall art, there are three of them that are told, that are proposed at 32 square feet. What the architect did was essentially try to minimize the showing of bells, right? Which was part of the concern or conversation, I should really say, that we had last time. And so they tried to do that in those locations, and then I'll just show you the other change. Actually, no, that's, there's not a change. On the front facade of the building, the west exterior elevation, that, that didn't change at all. So there's some, a slight modification to that as part of the resubmission.
Design is just on the doors, is that what that is?
No, so this, it remains as it was previously, where we're pointing to on the east exterior elevation, there's three wall art signs. Essentially, the graphic of those signs was modified in an attempt to reduce what could be perceived as a bell.
Oh. Is that planned on being changed over time?
Not to my knowledge.
This, I mean, this is the print we have this year, next year's print. Is that going to be something more in line with the Taco Bell theme, or whatever's popular that year?
So...
Go Jets?
So, I'm looking at my client, in 10 years' time, it could change, but if there's an elevation change, that might necessitate building department review, and as part of building department review, if it is a sign or deemed as a sign, that would kick it back to zoning, hence and start the process again.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say that I had said in my letter that the previous looking, that these constituted wall signs. And I would say that they now are sort of...
Artistic?
They're, whatever, obscure enough that you can't tell that these are bells. I no longer would constitute them as wall signage, which would change their variance slightly. They would still need a variance for amount of wall signage, but it would be significantly less than what was in my letter.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
My understanding is, is they still require two signs versus one max, and 41.25 square feet versus 18 square feet on the size. It's just that the potential for additional number of signs and area of signs no longer exists, in your opinion, under A5.
That's correct.
And to confirm, if these aren't signs anymore, then...
Talk into the mic.
Oh, if these aren't signs anymore, then we don't have to weigh in on them?
No, we still have to approve the signage that's on the building.
Right, these aren't signs.
And it becomes part of the architecture too, if we have an opinion on it.
It becomes part of the architecture. And it's still up to us as a board, even though our expert says she didn't consider them signs, it's still up to us to say they are or not. So, I mean, it's still our call on that. I'm not saying one way or the other, at this point, I'm just saying it's still our call, you know, and they, I mean, what I can see here, I'd have to look at it a little closer, but... Oh, also, just make sure everybody, when you're talking to your mic, because we've had somebody listen to the tape and they can't hear some of us, and that's not good, so make sure you speak...
It's not even on.
Put, well, make sure, right, well, no, we just touched it, it's on. But make sure, because if someone is absent and they have to listen to us, or want to listen to us because they haven't some yet, they should be ours. Go ahead.
That completes my direct testimony on the changes.
Now, before we go to us, do you have any questions?
No. I had reviewed the revised package, I found it consistent with my notes from the last meeting.
Okay, so none of their revisions or changes, you don't have any issues with the fence or any issues?
No, I thought the fence was, and the supplemental landscaping was a nice added improvement, met the intent of the comments, as well as adjustment of the lighting.
Good.
Provided a better lighting spread to the site.
Okay. All right, questions from the board? Yes?
So I noticed the master plan is replete with references to walkability, accessibility by pedestrians, making it more of a hometown feel, the business district. But I noticed that if you're going to walk to Taco Bell from Plainfield Road, you're going to have to walk down the street, and I'm wondering why there wasn't a sidewalk put in there?
So there are currently no sidewalks along Plainfield Road, referring back to A3, along the, what I'll call it, the southeastern area of the page, or of the drive-through entrance in that location. So there is ADA accessibility where there are sidewalks along the frontage on Valley Road that provides access directly to the front of the building.
So, if you live on Plainfield, you're going to have to walk up to Valley, make a left, go to Plainfield, make a left, and walk down the street?
Yeah, so really where there would be beneficial sidewalks added on Plainfield Road, which in my opinion would then necessitate or benefit adding sidewalk along or into the interior of a site, is again where I'm pointing to at the entrance, and that's actually beyond the frontage of this project.
Yeah, they, you have no control over that area.
Correct.
What about any walking paths along that back driveway that goes in from the back? Is there any possibility of putting a walking area there out of the car lanes?
Where are you referring to?
The driveway that comes off of Plainfield.
North of the driveway.
Right there, yeah. Is there any possibility of putting a walkway or some designated walking area or biking area through there?
I don't see the benefit of that from a pedestrian accessibility perspective. There is access off of Valley Road, which per ADA code we have to provide, and that's done in that location.
I would think you would want to discourage people from walking up that way, right? There's...
Well, yeah, like, obviously you would if there's no place to walk on it, yeah.
Well, if you guys recall, we approved a building across the street from that, and we talked about how great it is to have the residents be able to walk everywhere.
Right, yes, yes.
Which is it, you know, do we want them to walk, or do we want them to ride their bikes or take their cars?
I think that sidewalk ended though, before what this is, yeah.
Yes, it did.
Yeah.
That's, that's my point. I mean, are we just doing lip service to walkability, or do we really want it?
I thought part of the problem was we'd have to ask the county to get involved. It's a county road, not a town road.
That's part of the issue.
Part of, yeah.
But I've never seen the county not support any addition on any of the roads that we've ever asked for.
You mean a sidewalk type thing?
Sidewalk or road or pavement or anything, or signal, traffic signal, whatever we want, they usually deliver.
Is there...
It's because you ultimately do the ramps that way?
I think it's fair to say, though, that people are going to walk down the roadway,
unless you put a sign up saying you can't walk this way. If they live down in that area, they're not going to walk up to Valley Road.
Yeah.
And one of my objectives is to keep people off of Valley Road, because it probably sounds like a broken record, but we lost a child on that intersection on a bicycle, Melissa Songi died there. And, you know, do we want to push people to Valley Road? Dangerous, Valley Road's a highway. I don't want my kids anywhere near that road.
There is a sidewalk on Plainfield by the Lukoil on both sides of their driveway, the sidewalk seems to end.
He's talking about cutting in east from Plainfield, south of the buildings.
Oh, so that's not really county purview, that's, would be their purview, yeah.
If the, so the sidewalk that's coming down off of Valley around at the corner, how far south does that go? The existing sidewalk, it looks like it just comes to an end there?
Are you referring to the sidewalk along this, so it ends at the Taco Bell, well? I should say Lot 6. Yeah, Lot 6 property, which is the property on the south of the page.
So, it would be the county's responsibility to build more of that sidewalk?
Or the owner of that property?
The owner of that property?
Who owns that property?
Because without having a sidewalk, because, without having a sidewalk that connects to that driveway, it doesn't make sense to have another sidewalk and have vacant area in between.
No, I was talking about a walkway area along the driveway.
Yeah, but it needs to be connected to something.
Oh, that's true, but...
So without a sidewalk over there, then you're just getting people just running across the street. And I don't see what purpose that serves. It makes sense if there was a sidewalk that goes all the way down, but I don't know if it's...
Keeps them out of that street area, is what it does.
I don't know if it's their purview or not.
Keeps them out of the street on that elbow right there, is what it does. If you were to request sidewalk on Plainfield Road as an improvement by the developer, it would go to the county for their approval. But once you get the 100 feet south off the adjacent property to really the entrance, the easement entrance, you'd carry that sidewalk into the site, it would then have to cross the easement, cross the roadway to get the pedestrian to the other side of the trash enclosure. And then, and then you'd be crossing the drive-through as well, so you'd have two pedestrian crossings inside the site.
That's not probably good.
Yeah, that, I mean, you're almost adding more...
Could you do this on the south side and have just one crossing? Could you do that, or move the dumpster or something?
On the south side, you have limited room inside the property line.
And if it was north and you don't cross while you're on the driveway, if you cross somewhere in the parking lot?
That, that, you come north to the fenced enclosure or the dumpster. So, that, you know, that crossing would likely happen as interior to site near that stop bar. But then again, you'd be, you'd be putting somebody to a point to cross over the drive-through as well. So you're creating a lot of pedestrian conflict with those entering vehicles.
Yeah, that's a good point.
And that doesn't, that's not increasing the foot traffic off of Plainfield, that's really taking, receiving traffic from, say, the Walgreens intersection. So, you know, that traffic is, while we might not want our kids on Valley Road, that traffic is better served pedestrian-wise, coming across the frontage of that corner property and entering on the existing entrance. Yep.
Good, thank you. Any other questions? Yes?
Thank you for the last meeting, which I watched, and this meeting. The purple that you have on the, I'm about to see three, the purple that is on the building, aside from the artwork, would that be part of the, well, let's just say, the logo of Taco Bell?
Or the color scheme?
The color scheme of Taco Bell?
It coincides with the color scheme of Taco Bell.
Okay, because then that needs to be added to, as we did in Exxon. The wraparound on Exxon is all in red, and since it was the color scheme, it had to, it was the, went to the limit of how much they were allowed to use.
Do we consider...
I'm gonna, I may punt to Mr. Warner, but I wouldn't typically, but it is part of their branding, that's for sure, but I wouldn't call it signage.
I think Exxon's canopy was because the word Exxon was there with the lines attached to it.
They had lights behind there, and they voluntarily withdrew that at the first meeting. They just said, if it's an issue, we don't want it, and they didn't put it in.
Okay.
It was the lighting, I think, was the issue for them.
Yeah, and the word Exxon.
Yeah.
And frankly, I would point back to Liz, because it's, beauty is in the eye of the planner. And, yeah, certainly I understand if the prior artwork was a repeater of the logo of the bell, you know, then that certainly was a good argument for it being a signage. But the color, it'd be rare in my experience to hear a planner say, oh yeah, if it's a color that they always use, that constitutes a sign wherever they have that color.
I wasn't even aware that was their color.
I didn't either.
I would agree with Mr. Warner, I don't think it's a sign, I do think it's part of their branding, though.
Any other questions?
I just, I do have questions, but I don't know when to address them. It's regarding the architecture and the stuff that we've been presented with. When do we, do we want to do that now?
You have a traffic engineer and a planner to come, so...
You have a planner?
Probably just as good now, if you're talking about signs.
Okay, then ask the engineer.
There's no architect coming.
Okay, that's fine, okay, that's, that's my issue. Well, first, with our engineer, the last meeting, we talked about the stormwater management, and my concern is that the existing structure, that's, the proposal is to reuse the existing structure that's there. Is that correct?
The detention basin, yeah.
The detention basin, right. And we talked about, would that be sufficient to be in compliance with the regulations today, given the square footage and everything? Is that 100% sufficient to handle every aspect of our current stormwater management plan?
Yeah, the, the site is, the site was modeled using the existing conditions of that basin to route through the proposed development, so...
So if someone's building, if that was a clean slate, and they're building this structure...
It's a different set of rules. If it's a clean, if the site's a clean...
I'm not, I don't want to compare apples to apples, what I want to do is compare, if they were starting out fresh, what would they have to do? Would it be, would it be...
The detention basin would have to be replaced with a green infrastructure basin for our likely, not just detention, but water quality, potentially, depending on the thresholds.
So what if I switched my focus to just volume and not quality?
The volume itself, the volume's the same standard.
Okay.
And so that's the standard they're meeting, because this is not a major development. The disturbances came before the original 2004 rules, and what they're doing now does not trigger major development standards again.
I think quality is important, but my real focus is the volume, so that, thank you for that.
So we're at, we're at a threshold value where the water quality impairment is below the threshold because of the prior disturbance of the site. So they essentially get that credit of the prior disturbance, and what they're doing now meets all current regulations for the amount of disturbance they're doing now.
Thank you.
And there is additional quantity in the basin, based on, this is a slight reduction from the original approval in the intensity. So there is some room additional for, call it, you know, factor of safety of that basin to manage additional stormwater flows if there was a high-intensity storm that's slightly off from a designed storm, before it discharges into the county system.
Great. Thank you very much. My next focus is going to be the architecture. While I like it, I just don't think it's suitable for our area and the area that you're proposing to apply that. We have a pretty uniform architecture on our, we would call in our master plan, emerging town center, or the emerging downtown. If you look at the style buildings here, they're mostly like brick, like the one we're in, like the Walgreens, all the new banks that were constructed, when I say new, I mean over the last 25 or 30 years. They all have that federal-style brick, brick and white motif. They're not identical, but they have similar characteristics. And I just feel that this building is completely out of, out of character with this neighborhood. It would actually clash with the neighborhood. And I think it's beautiful architecture, and the colors are great, but they're not for here. They're for somewhere in Arizona, or some, I would say, busier environment where there's lots of different things, right? Lots of different colors, but here, it's kind of uniform. And I think that would, I think would be detraction from what we have here. And what we're focused on, which is the whole package, it's the wood signs, the downlighting, the brick, and over time, we're talking about a fence, right? What's a fence going to look like in 10 years, but what's that building going to look like in 10 or 15 years versus a brick building?
Well, what is the materials?
It's a fiber cement panel and cement siding in certain locations.
Can that be made to look like brick?
No.
Have you ever had to accommodate a township that requires something different than your standard in terms of building facade?
I'm not aware of that.
Yeah, yeah, grab the mic.
Robert Delia, I acknowledge I'm still under oath. There is some gray brick material that's used in there. Frankly, you know, without, with a very small sign, that's 20, 16 square feet is tiny. You know, the building design is essential to the success of the business. And, you know, as I think I stated earlier, this is kind of a small, you know, intended to be a lower-volume type restaurant. And if we go too far off the identification of what a Taco Bell is... And if we go too far off the identification of what a Taco Bell is, i- it's detrimental to the business. So I think if, uh, I believe, I've seen, this is more like a, uh, like a, like a siding, you know, with strips, and I believe that could be converted to a, a gray brick. But the colors are, are, are very important to the identification of the business.
I'm sorry, can you explain... Mrs. Delia?
Yes, sir.
What exactly can be converted to gray brick?
Can we do a gray brick on that? Because that, that's that material, that, what do they call it? The nichiha? So there was an older standard material that was used, uh, that was a similar type of material, that fibrous cement, which a lot of people are using for siding now and others. Um, we'll, we'll look into seeing if we can, if we can still use that, if we can still get that. And it could be done in a couple of different ways, perhaps, you know, like, like just at the lower sides as like a knee wall, um, or, or perhaps the entire gray area.
Are you saying it's like a, like a hardy board, a cement board that looks like wood grain?
It's a similar material to that, but it, they're sheets. It's not individual pieces, correct? But it is like, i- it's that type of construction. It lasts forever. It's very durable, unlike, you know, a lot of the old, uh, you know, styrofoam stuff, which was not very durable.
And has a texture as opposed to, or a rickish texture, a wooded grain texture.
Well, that one has like a brick, um, imprint on it. You know, versus the siding-type imprint here.
This here is smooth.
Um, it, 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 there is an, there is some, uh, texture to it. It's not smooth, smooth, no. I mean, it's kind of, the building is kind of designed with that, as you pointed out, the southwestern type. You know, and, and in some ways, it's a little rough, uh, you know, intending to, to, uh, meet that, you know, to, to, to look that way. So, so, uh, in, in, in summary, perhaps we can switch that over if that is, material is still offered.
All right, could you check, how long would that take you to check on that?
Uh, it's not easy.
Oh, okay. So, just so you understand my concern, it's more about the whole architectural package, including the colors, and like you said, the southwest motif versus what we have here. So...
If, if that material is available, I think we would be agreeable to use it.
But Bob, but generally speaking, this is the building design.
This is the building design.
You may be switching it out, but this is what Taco Bell provides for. You don't have an option to go to a federalist design.
No, and, and honestly, we, we, yeah, we wouldn't do that.
Burger King is, is federalist design either, but...
No, it's important that we maintain our identity.
So these dial-up's...
Mistakes are no indication of future passage of, of, of a case, right?
I'm sorry?
He's pointing to Burger King and saying that they don't have it. But just because mistakes were made in the past doesn't mean we're gonna continue to do those same mistakes in the future.
Well, and I, I will point out that on Taco Bell's website, there's pictures of buildings with stacked stone facades and the lights.
There are some different materials, and, and, you know, they change what the stand, the corporate standard is periodically. And then there's also, you know, these buildings get remodeled pretty regularly and, and, uh, so there, there's definitely some variability as to, uh, the buildings. A building that was built, uh, when I said that to, uh, our construction manager who's here, we, we, we did one about four or five years ago that used that brick material instead of this, and that's why I'm thinking we may be able to still access that. And it, I think it achieves the same overall look for Taco Bell, um, but, but could give...
In keeping with the brick motif.
Yes, but it could be, yes.
But it'll still be this gray.
It would still be this gray color, yes.
So would this be also then, I guess, an extension of the branding, like the purple that we talked about?
Yes, Taco Bell corporate, um, I don't want to use the word dictates, but basically says, "These are the, these are the designs," is a architecture, and you need department there that says, you know, "This is what the franchisees are allowed to build."
Yes. No, it's, but, well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Certainly it's been my experience that other, what's the term now, quick food?
Quick-service restaurants.
Quick-serve restaurants have alternative packages, and there are many municipalities in New Jersey that require, have certain requirements with respect to architectural design standards, and they do often seem to find a way to fit one of their packages in. So that's why when you initially seemed to be saying they don't have alternatives, but now I think I'm hearing the boards hearing more. There are some alternative packages.
There's a slight modification that I, we, we may be able to make. Uh, you know, especially in this location, when you drive by, that building sits back. It's not very visible. It's, it's critical to us that we have a, a visible and identifiable building. There's a very small sign here. 16 square feet is tiny. Now, a couple, you know, counter that with the speed of traffic, you know, uh, so it's, it's not a highway. So some compromises can be made. It's important that people know who we are and identify us, otherwise we're not gonna be successful. And there's a lot of vacancy in this area. We, we, we're not doing, you know, we're doing this because we, you know, hope for a long-term, uh, successful business, as I'm sure you...
And we want you to be successful, obviously. We want all of our businesses to be successful, but we also want to have uniform, and we want standards within our town. And the way your attorney pointed to an existing building, the next attorney's gonna point to two existing buildings, and then three, and then four, and then it's gonna be mayhem. We don't want any...
Well, you know, respectfully, businesses have to have their identities.
Sure.
Is the construction... Is the construction professional being put up?
No.
No, okay.
I'm, I'm not 100% like, say, look, I, we, if, if we can make a moderate, uh, uh, modification here to, that, that, that satisfies you, we'll, we'll, we'll try very hard to do it. I'm, I'm not promising. I can't promise that we can do it. If, if, if we can get the material and, uh, Taco Bell Architecture and Engineering has to approve it, this is, you know, 6,000 restaurant chain that, that has standards. So, uh, but, but I believe we could possibly make that, I, I, we would certainly try to make that happen.
Any other questions?
I guess for any possible variation of the standard, are they all this color scheme? Or is there anything that's not that color?
If you saw something from a few years ago, it might look a little bit different. Anything that's being built today, you know, is, is this color scheme.
Um, I'll open up to the member of the public. You have any questions of their engineer or the gentleman that just spoke? Come up and identify yourself. Just questions now, not comments. Comments come later.
This is not my first rodeo, Mr. Chairman.
I know, just, just reminding you.
You don't need to remind me.
Say your name.
Char... This is not my first rodeo, Mr. Chairman. Please stop. Charles Zarenowitz, Heritage Road, Millington. My concern as Mr. Raniow is the safety of our residents. As he pointed out, we had a child that passed away at this intersection. My question is, I'm gonna get to the question, Mr. Chairman, cut it out.
Oh, come on.
I'm just asking you for a question here.
I'm, I'm gonna preempt the comment, then I'm gonna ask my question. Safety is a major concern. So when you say, "Well, we can put a sidewalk off Plainfield slash Sterling Road, but it's gonna go across the drive-through." The drive-through is a variance that this applicant is requesting. Drive-throughs are only allowed in this town for banks and pharmacies. So my question is, to whoever wants the answer from the applicant, with this safety concern, if we put a sidewalk in and disregarded the cross of the drive-through, how safe would it be?
I'll just hold that question. We do have a traffic engineer who's gonna be speaking as well as a professional planner, so we can just hold that.
Well, but the problem is, there was...
Right now, you've heard from our civil engineer. So we are gonna have testimony from our traffic engineer, and we have testimony from our professional planner. Honestly, we will circle back to that question.
But that is more of a traffic question.
Well, we talked about safety, and everybody said, "Oh, God, we got a drive-through. We can't put a sidewalk there." So now we're gonna go to the traffic guy to answer the sidewalk question? Is that what you're telling me?
Would you have a specific question for their engineer?
No, that's what I'm asking. I asked the engineer, is it, say, is it more safe if we do away with the driveway and put the sidewalk in?
Does the engineer have a response to that?
James, yeah, I mean, we, we have sidewalks that you spoke to earlier. Answer the question to the extent you can.
Thank you.
And then we'll have our traffic...
Then he have the mic or he needs the mic?
He can take it. We only have, we're cut on budget. We don't have a microphone here tonight.
So I just want to clarify, are you asking, could you clarify your question? I'm not quite following.
In prior testimony, there was a question made that we could put sidewalks off Sterling slash Plainfield Road so that patrons could be safe walking along that driveway and getting into the restaurant. People said, "Oh, God, we can't do that. That's crossing, crossing the, the, uh, drive-through. That's not safe." So my question is, if you eliminate the drive-through, how safe it is to walk on the sidewalk to your restaurant?
The drive-through will not be eliminated as part of his application.
That's not what I asked.
No, I think what he wants to know is, we also mentioned that if the sidewalk goes right into the gar- garbage collection, then you have to cross the, the driveway.
Driveway.
Driveway, that, the walkway that you're walking alongside of. So you still have to cross that. Because you can't put it on the south side, there's not enough room, from what I understand.
Uh, correct, in the instance you just, uh, spoke to, yes, you would still have to cross the driveway.
So you still have to cross something with cars going across it?
Yes.
I think that, that was our other concern, you're crossing another driveway to get to the building. That was one of our concerns, too. It wasn't just the, the, the drive-through. It was the driveway.
I'm gonna ask the question again. You testified that if we built a sidewalk there, we gotta go across the walkway and across the drive-through. So if we eliminate the drive-through, would it be safer, safer for someone to walk to your restaurant?
So to clarify for the record, I did not testify to that. That actually came up in conversation with your, your board engineer. So would you like to direct your question to him?
Can you answer that? Yeah, can you answer it?
Would it be safer?
If, if you just had the crossing of the driveway and not the crossing of the drive, of the drive-through itself?
I believe nominally safer to cross one driveway instead of two crossings.
Okay.
Yes.
So you eliminated one crossing.
Okay, fine.
So I'm assuming it's safer, is that fair to say?
I heard.
I think so.
Believe that's what I said.
You contended that there would be a reduction in the volume of this basin, is that correct? Tell me what you said about the basin reducing or holding more water.
The site as designed will meet or reduce the rate of runoff as compared to the existing conditions, how it was designed.
Do these rates correspond to the requirements in place? Believe me, I heard this story at ShopRite, every location, "We're gonna s- protect the town, we're gonna reduce flooding. This is gonna be great. We still flood."
What was your question?
Explain to me, under the new requirements, whether or not this reduction in the basin is gonna minimize all the flooding and whatever occurs in that area.
So what we testified, too, is that we've modeled the site as compared to how it was originally approved, which is for additional impervious coverage than it is before the application tonight, and is more of an existing impervious coverage at the site today. We've modeled that against the site as designed today, and therefore, the basin is designed to have more volume and rate of runoff than is actually tributary to it based on these conditions.
There you go, we're reducing flooding. The individual that asked about and commented on branding, if you look at what Burger King has, McDonald's, Taco Bell, there's not one brand, there's not one building. They all change. So when corporate says, "We're gonna have a purple sign," and that's what it is, I guess for the person that testified, there's no changes. I'd like to know, how many variations in the building are there in the 6,000 stores of Taco Bell? There you go.
Make sure they heard that.
Hundreds.
Okay.
So they will accommodate what you want.
Thank you.
There's no standard.
Thank you for letting me speak, Mr. Correct. I have a lot of questions.
Thank you, thank you.
And it is not accurate that there are no standards, everyone. Please, please understand that.
They update their standards.
Please, understand. He has the right to ask questions, and he got his answer.
I didn't hear what he said. What did he say?
I said, "It is not accurate that there are no standards."
Yeah, well, that's, that's fine.
Can I repeat that?
No, 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 no.
Questions only.
No, that's it. No, you made your point, we got your point, and he just responded. That's fine. We, we understand what you were saying, and that, that's a valid point. We understand it.
That's disrespect.
Okay, he was just commenting as an, as an advocate for his client.
Yeah, sure.
Um, so, um, okay, now, um, what's your next witness? Traffic, okay.
Yes.
Keep it rolling.
Please raise your right hand, Mr. Polyniak, because I think someone else was here last time. Do you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please proceed.
Oh, before you do, um, what is your qualifying qualification, does it? You're just doing that good, okay.
Could you please provide the board's brief summary of your educational and professional background and licenses involved?
Absolutely. Uh, my name is Douglas Polyniak, P-O-L-Y-N-I-A-K. I'm an engineer with Dolan &amp; Dean Consulting Engineers in Somerville, New Jersey. I'm a graduate of Lehigh University in Bethlehem, Pennsylvania, with a Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering. Uh, I acquired that degree in 1998. Since that time, I've been working in the field of traffic engineering. I've been a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey for approximately the last 19 years. Uh, I've testified before approximately 100 municipal planning and zoning boards within the state of New Jersey, uh, including this board, um, for the 44 Plainfield Road project and many other projects within Morris County and throughout the state.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And your, all your licenses are current?
Current and in good standing, correct.
Mr. Polyniak, your office prepared the traffic impact statement, additional traffic report that's been submitted to the board, is that correct?
That is correct.
Are you familiar with the application for the board's end of the year?
Absolutely.
So let me just turn it over to you, please run through your partings with respect to trip generation, traffic impacts, et cetera, that may be expected to be associated. The conversion of this former bank site to a Taco Bell restaurant.
Sure. Yes, at the request of the board's traffic consultant, uh, we prepared that full traffic study that was dated May 16th, uh, of this year to review the peak hour traffic impacts uh, we prepared that full traffic study that was dated May 16th of this year to review the peak hour traffic impacts and to review the site plan. The change in use from the, uh, prior drive-in bank to the Taco Bell will not create a significant increase in traffic along the adjacent roadway system. To review these peak hour traffic volumes, what we did is we looked at the 11th edition of the Trip Generation Manual, which was created by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, and we looked at a fast food restaurant with drive-throughs, the land-use category. Based on this information, uh, we found that, uh, the IT considers the Saturday midday peak period the busiest timeframe, and for a building of this size would experience about, uh, 68 customers during that peak period, and the morning and evening are considered lower at about 55 customers. However, it's important to note, a use such as this draws a lot of its traffic from, uh, the adjacent roadway system. It's called pass-by traffic. Um, the IT says that a fast food restaurant with a drive-through may, um, attract up to 50% pass-by traffic. That's traffic that's bypassing the site along Valley Road and Plainfield Road during the commuter morning and evening peaks and Saturday rush hour peaks, and they're not new to the area. They're just stopping there for dinner on their way home. So half of that, 65 customers or 68 customers that I said earlier, is already on the roadway. So we're looking at possibly one new vehicle into this area every two minutes during the busiest peak period. NJDOT and the ITE state that 100 peak hour trips is what is considered a significant increase in traffic. And by that, they mean that kind of volume may require a study to determine the impacts associated uh, with that level of traffic on off-site intersections. Uh, this facility will generate less than that 100 peak hour trips, but as requested by your engineer, we went ahead and we did a study of, um, the site driveways with the Taco Bell, as well as the adjacent signalized intersection of Valley Road and Plainfield Road. We used the traffic volumes, uh, that were created via the CHS Assisted Living Facility, which is, uh, to be located near the Walgreens on the northerly leg of the intersection. We took the volumes that they created and added the Taco Bell trip generation data that I just spoke of, and we prepared a level of service delay analysis of the intersection, as well as the two site driveways. Based on our analysis, uh, we found that all movements at the site driveways, as well as at the intersection, uh, will operate at level of service C or better, which is a favorable level of service, and there will be no, um, changes in levels of service at the signalized intersection, demonstrating, uh, the limited impact of the Taco Bell restaurant itself. Uh, it's also important to note that doesn't take into account any, um, traffic associated with the former bank. It was, it was formerly, uh, you know, an operating bank which generated traffic to the area. Um, so that it is, does historically have a, um, a, a process of generating traffic at those two driveways that are, uh, proposed to remain. Like I said, we also reviewed the site plan with respect to access, parking, and the drive-through queuing and the associated site layout. Uh, as you heard testimony, I'm sure from Mr. Delia, the drive-through allow for a minimum of eight cars to stack without impeding any operations on the subject property. Taco Bell typically looks for about seven to eight vehicle queues. Uh, this meets that. Uh, in our experience, um, you know, we've seen that level of queuing at Taco Bell's as well. When queues appear long, customers tend to go inside. Taco Bell has a, a mobile ordering process that allows for queues to be reduced as well as delays. Even though, uh, the site can accommodate eight vehicles without impacting onsite flow, there is a factor of safety or level of safety that won't impact any roadways, um, either Valley Road or Plainfield Road, as you can accommodate, uh, double that stacking prior to reaching any of the roadways, which, which is very helpful when it comes to roadway safety. Uh, the access, as I said, will continue to be provided via the driveways that serve the bank, full movement driveways on Valley Road and Plainfield Road that will operate at level of service C or better during those busiest peak periods. Uh, the access and site are both along county roadways and are subject to their review and approval. 24 parking spaces are proposed for the site, which, uh, meets the, uh, level of parking that Taco Bell generally requires for their sites that exceeds the, uh, local ordinance of, uh, parking spaces required, and also exceeds that which the ITE would deem necessary, uh, in the Parking Generation Manual for a fast food restaurant with drive-through. So overall, sufficient parking will be provided for the site. Um, and then, you know, in summation, just based on, on my testimony, um, there, there's going to be very minimal off-site impact associated with the site. The driveways will operate safely and efficiently, and the site overall layout has been designed to accommodate sufficient stacking, parking, and two-way flow of traffic.
Referring to our traffic expert, do you have any questions, comments?
And Mr. Fischinger, I believe I saw you in at the last hearing?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
Um, Doug, just for clarification, um, can you confirm, you said you would use traffic numbers out of the assisted living report?
Yes.
Does your analysis include the traffic from that development?
Yes, it does. What we did is we took their build traffic volumes, which were their inflated future volumes that included that site, and then we, we actually inflated those volumes even farther to account for 2025 build year for this Taco Bell property, and then added our, uh, Taco Bell traffic on top of that.
He got to my next question before even I did. Um, generally speaking, um, I reviewed their report. They pretty much gave me exactly what I asked for. I wanted to confirm. Even though they're under that 100-trip threshold, especially with this being a zoning application, and to make sure the driveways work appropriately, and I'm in agreement with their analysis. When I reviewed it, I looked at the access on Valley Road slightly differently, where I considered it being a left lane and a through lane, where their study had two through lanes. It doesn't materially change the answer. The, the numbers change by a second or two, but I'm in agreement with Mr. Polyniak's findings.
Questions from the board? No?
I have a few, if nobody else is.
Yeah, go ahead. No, no, nobody else. Go ahead.
The, uh, one, one question on the pass-by traffic. If I understood correctly, it's, uh, generally accepted, or maybe it's, but you tell me, maybe it's based on, uh, uh, actual sampling that, uh, this type of quick serve gets about a 50/50 pass-through, or pass-by traffic, 50% pass-by traffic?
Yeah, that's what the IT data states.
And you used the full 50%?
In our analysis, correct.
Uh, is, is there any recognition of the type of roadway or thoroughfare? For example, uh, highway versus, uh, county, you know, route versus minor arterial versus et cetera, or, you know, et cetera? Because one might think that there'd be a greater, uh, 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 percentage of pass-by traffic, well, one, one, I don't know, maybe literally one might think, uh, uh, on a highway versus a, a, uh, a, a more secluded road, or a local road.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think it necessarily matters the type of roadway, because what you have is a lower volume of traffic. It's possible that a site such as this that may not be on, you know, Route 22, that experiences thousands of more vehicles passing, would have less traffic enter and exit the site.
I mean, even proportionately, though, the 50%.
Yeah, I think it would-
Bigger roads, you would think longer trips. Longer trips, you would think a greater likelihood somebody's going to say, "I'm hungry. I want a taco."
Yeah, I mean, if you're stopping home for the kids, you know, grabbing dinner, uh, you know, you're in the neighborhood. So I don't necessarily think it's dependent on the type of roadway, just-
If it were 40% or 35% pass-by, would that materially change your analysis?
No, no. It's another, when we're dealing with such low volumes, you're dealing with another six trips or something like that.
I have nothing, I don't want to belabor that one point.
While you're on that, Doug, if I can clear up. If we, if you use, say, a 25% pass-by, the, would the number of cars coming in and out of your driveways change?
Not at all. No, it's the same vehicles in and out, uh, turning into and out of the site. It would just throw a handful of extra volume along, uh, the roadway.
The entire route, because these are, they're, they're not pass-by. They're general, they're destination traffic for the high, for, for the Taco Bell.
Correct.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
Kind of along those lines, Mr. Delia, when you spoke last time, you said breakfast was probably not a big proportion of your business. But if you look at the traffic study, it seems that there's going to be more traffic in the morning than the evening, if I'm reading page five correctly.
Yeah, and that's because this data is not-
Can you just expand on that?
Yeah, absolutely. This is not specifically Taco Bell data. It's fast food restaurant data that's been collected by the IT. So that'll include a McDonald's or a Burger King that may experience a greater draw of, um, of breakfast, um, purchases. Whereas also, the morning peak hour, when it comes to a restaurant, is generally the commuter peak hour. Dinner times can peak a little bit after the commuter peaks, you know, more like 7 o'clock. Someone may be going to dinner. So you, you, for those other types of fast food restaurants, you may see a little higher, um, trip gen during the morning peak hour than the evening commuter peak hour.
So for, for that comparison, then, did you observe or, or tally any traffic going in and out of the Burger King to see how that compares to this, you know, standard?
Yes, we took some spot counts at the Burger King just to get a feel. So we didn't do a full hour count, but we did a half an hour count during the evening, and found about 20 some odd cars entering and exiting during the hour. So if you were to double that, you're in that 50 range, which kind of matches the IT data, so it is in that ballpark.
So the volume that you expect, or using your data, is still tremendously more than the bank, right? That the bank wasn't getting nearly this kind of volume?
Yeah, I wouldn't define it as tremendously, but I would say, yes, it's higher.
Higher than, I, I would say all the banks in this area, probably, because there's probably not a lot of traffic going in and out of the banks right now.
Yeah, brick and mortar banks are low trip generators, yes.
In their heyday, they had more.
But, right, but it's still not impactful for the Valley Road traffic pattern, is what you're talking about.
Yeah, I, we didn't take into account or take any credits for the existing bank. We assumed the site was completely vacant and put that traffic on top of it.
Right, but from what you would expect from a normal bank, sl- business function, rather than, I, I don't, I don't remember the right word. It's not fast food. It's, uh, quick serve.
Quick serve.
The quick serve is a higher volume, but not impactful to the traffic flow on the, the rest of the road.
Correct. Correct.
Any other questions? Did you have?
Yeah.
Okay.
I assume, you know, that, that these, these, um, kind of, what, what's the, uh, is it a company that does these, that you're saying you're using the data from?
Uh, the Institute of Transportation Engineers.
I assume that in the, in now, you know, the era we're in, they count like these delivery services, the Uber Eats and stuff like that? Or is that not taken into account in these, in the trip?
Most likely not as much as it's used now, because the data isn't 100% current. Um, you know, the volumes come out maybe every couple of years. So I assume the next volume that comes out is going to take into account a lot of the Uber Eats and Grubhub and that sort of thing.
In your, oh, I was going to say, in your professional experience, though, does that increase or decrease? Does that, because I know sometimes people, like, people pick up multiple orders there.
Yeah.
Or, so what do you, I mean, just your professional opinion on that?
Uh, it's interesting. I, I don't know if it would make much of a difference just because we're not dealing with such substantial volumes of traffic and a lot of it being pass-by in nature. If you're heading home from work, it's not going to change if you're one of those vehicles on the, on the street. If you're si, if you're home, it, it adds a matter of convenience, but like you also said, you could have multiple orders in one. That kind of negates the additional traffic, because you're having multiple orders in one vehicle. So I, I don't think it would be a measurable difference.
I just want to make sure, uh, you stipulated all the conditions that I believe Mr. Fischinger wanted you to do, uh, in his, uh, updated May 25, 2023 report, maybe six, uh, six through 11. One of them might have been a question, uh, for testimony, but I guess the advocacy of the 18 by 20 sign. I don't know if that's you, but from a traffic-
Yeah, I mean, from a traffic standpoint, I'm always going to probably err on the side of a larger sign, uh, just to make sure that the motoring public is aware of, um, you know, what they're looking for, so they're not required to make a quicker, shorter, more erratic, you know, deceleration into a driveway. So I, I don't know what sign necessarily I could testify would, would be adequate or, but, but I could say a larger sign would be clearer for the motoring public.
And just to confirm, the sign that was proposed doesn't say "drive-through" or anything like that on it, right? It just, was the Taco Bell signage?
Uh, yes. I don't know specifically exactly, yeah.
Can we just clarify that, uh, if you don't mind, the, uh, directional sign, I need to raise the height of it to 3 feet. Uh, again, just to scrub the contents in a word.
Off of Plainfield, you mean?
Off of Plainfield.
But the one on Valley Road, does it say "drive-through" on it anywhere?
Breakfast. It says breakfast.
Starting with the sign on, uh, Valley Road, this is Exhibit A4. It says Taco Bell, and has the words "breakfast" underneath. And flipping to Sheet C-903 for the directional sign. This will be Exhibit A6. Sheet C903, it shows the directional sign on the bottom right corner. And as you can see, it just says Taco Bell, enter with an arrow.
So my question, just to close the loop on that, is what you're proposing, you're showing in these drawings, is the exact verbiage that will appear on the signs as they're built?
Yes.
So it'll say "breakfast" permanently on the bottom of the Taco Bell sign on Valley Road?
Yes.
Does any of the signs that Taco Bell designs say the word "drive-through," or do they have any indication? Or is that just taken for granted? Or, I mean, just curious as to why there's no, no mention of the drive-through on the sign?
Yes, I have seen them say the word "drive-through" on it, but, um, the new signs that we're proposing for Taco Bell do not have that, uh, language on it.
Is it just assumed among your patrons that that's how, that's how it is, that they're all drive-throughs, except in the places we talked about in the last meeting, like Hoboken or in urban area?
Yes.
Can you stipate the, the conditions in six, uh, eight, nine, 10, and 11? And actually, eight requires the auto turns. I, I forget if we got those or not. Uh, or if, or if Mr. Fischinger was suggesting those as a, if there's an approval, as a stipulated to condition of approval. Uh, that's number eight.
Yeah, we'll, we'll comply with, uh, Mr. Fischinger's comments.
Okay, so that's, uh, and I guess I still have the question for Mr. Fischinger. Is after the fact good on the auto turns, or is that a before the fact?
Um, I'm okay with dealing with it as a condition of approval. Quite frankly, because this is an existing site, it functioned as a bank with a dumpster enclosure. If the garbage truck could get through the bank, into the bank before, it probably can still now. And I think ultimately, if they provide turning templates that they can't satisfy me for, then they're coming back to the board with revisions. Said if this was a virgin site with no, nothing before, I'd be a little more concerned. But it functioned with the dumpster enclosure for years. I can't imagine, while this use may see more garbage trucks than the bank did, they probably generate more trash. I don't think it'll be a, it should not be an issue.
In the event it's an approval, and in the event, uh, there's, the board wishes, uh, you to stipulate to that condition or impose it in the alternative, um, would we be making it subject to the, uh, if the auto turns are insufficient, I guess I should say, I think the board is probably going to want it to be subject to the review and approval of our traffic engineer.
So if I may, for the benefit of the board, we did submit a WB40 truck turning template, which is larger than all of the requested templates by this letter.
Not the fire, not the, not, not the fire truck?
Yes, it would be larger than the fire truck based on its wheelbase, so be-
Not a truck?
Yes. So because of that, we feel very confident that all the trucks that are asked for in this letter will work with no, uh, with no issue. So we agreed to make this a condition of approval.
Stipulated to, right. And it would still be subject to review and approval, I assume, if we get there to that point, uh, of the traffic engineer, uh, his reasonable discretion, and in the event it's, uh, it's a no-go, uh, the board will retain jurisdiction. You'd be back here as part of the stipulated to condition. Is, uh, that a condition you can stipulate to?
Yes, sir, this morning.
Okay, well, if it has "sir" in it, then I, I'll take it as a- There you go. Well, I don't, it might even be overdue, but, yeah.
Any other questions by board members?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, I know some of you drilled down on the details of, you know, the amount of traffic in the morning and the afternoon, but let's just take a typical Thursday night. What percentage of increase in traffic would we expect to see on our roads?
That's a detailed, easy question with detailed answer. What percent increase on the roadway during a evening peak hour?
I mean, I know what the traffic is like now.
Yeah, so, so like I said, it's about 50 new customers during a peak hour, half of which are new, specifically generated coming to the Taco Bell. So that would be 25 new vehicles that make a in and an out, um, dispersed- that make a in and an out dispersed over both Valley and Plainfield Road. So when you have, you know, hundreds upon hundreds of vehicles on those roadways, very small percent increase, extremely small.
Now.
If it was 100 cars, it would be a 25% increase, but it's not 100 cars. It's more than that.
No.
In and out, yeah.
It's not even close, right?
If there were 100 vehicles at the intersection and
That's a 25% increase in the traffic flow?
Well, he says 25 more cars.
Yeah, but there's, I could
How many cars going in or out?
I can tell you what's going on at, at the intersection, just at it. I mean, you have, you have 1,000 two-way vehicles. I'm sorry, that's the morning peak hour. You have 1,300 two-way vehicles on Valley Road passing the site in one hour and about 1,000 on Plainfield Road on the frontages. So, you know.
Out of those thousands, there's 25 more.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And then my other question, my other questions are about the site specific, not the traffic driving around it. It sounded like you were saying that there's someone walking around taking orders. They're not just, people are not just driving up and placing their order the old fashioned way?
Yeah, no, maybe I misspoke that. They have the ability to do mobile orders. So if I'm on the Taco Bell app, I can buy my Chalupa and have it ready when I get to the drive-through, not have to go to the order board.
Or walk in and get it, either.
Or walk in or likely park and have someone bring it, correct?
Okay. So at the last meeting, I heard that the drive-through area might be two lanes wide. Does that mean that people who don't have to place their order at the ordering signboard can go around the other people because they place their order with their app?
No, I don't think that would be the intention. There's, there's a limited bypass lane on the site for, you know, anyone who may decide, hey, I gotta go get my, I forgot to pick up my kid. I gotta get out of here. You gotta wait one or two cars to get through
Oh, I changed my mind. I want to go inside.
Exactly. It's a
How do people know whether to use the bypass lane in just those cases where they forgot to pick up their kid instead of taking the time to go around somebody because they placed their order with the app? Is there a sign, another sign that says, don't go around?
Well, most often, if you're, if you're in line and you had placed a mobile order, there'll, there'll be someone at the pickup window or at the order board. So you won't be able to cut them off. If there's no one there, then it's not a problem.
Yeah, because the double lane doesn't start by the, by the, by the order board. It's further up, right? The double lane is further up.
Correct, yeah. You have to get a couple of cars deep into the drive-through in order to get to the
If I may, Mr. Chairman, Doug, typically I've seen, is this the case for this use? Typically, I've seen you'd pull up to the first, the speaker box, for lack of a better term. You'd give them some sort of code to tell them it's your order and then you'd drive up to the second window to pick it up.
Yeah.
And the difference would be that you've already ordered, you've already paid. They just hand you your food and you go instead of you giving them money or a credit card and waiting for your change.
100% correct. Yes, you, you don't have to go through the process of payment and ordering.
I wanted to ask you too. You mentioned something about the time that the, that the board, that the drive-through would be open to. What was that, what is Taco Bell requesting as to when that time period, that's going to be open?
Yeah, I think I would ask.
And we had, testimony originally was drive-through open until 2:00 AM.
Correct.
Okay. Does that
On Friday and Saturday.
On Friday and Saturday. Tom, go ahead. Why don't you just
What about Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday?
No, midnight.
Midnight. And what is the rationale on Friday and Saturday happen to open till 2:00?
Just because people are out a little bit later during, during the week.
When the bars close.
It's true.
Not in this town.
No, there are no bars anymore, basically. Okay, is there any flexibility on that?
We're importing it. Minimal. I mean, we, we, if there's no business, honestly, they may close at 1:00 AM. But they'd like to have two-way.
Twirling your thumbs at you.
And, and they probably wouldn't operate if that were the case.
Yeah, just, I don't, I don't see in this town much of a
I don't disagree with you.
What?
I don't disagree with you.
But I mean, that, that, that doesn't seem to go with the, you know, the rest of the building, the rest of the buildings on Valley Road or in town, to be honest with you. Nothing stays open that late that I know.
Burger King's till 10:00 and on the weekend till 11:00.
Yeah, and that's in the Burger King resolution of approval.
Yeah.
You're not pointing at them.
But everybody has their own merits of their own case.
Right, right. But we're trying to
What we're experiencing now is closing at 11:00.
Yeah. Yes, I know. But it, it does seem, 2:00 does seem a little extreme as far as the time goes.
For you and I, it does. We are long asleep by then.
Yes. I mean, I don't think Dunkin' Donuts is open that long. But, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
I, we did get a confirmation that from our architect while we were talking that there, that, that material that I had mentioned is available. James Thion has a copy of it. You can utilize the material, I guess, and the number on it as a, as part of the
So that's like a brick looking that
Yeah, it's the same, same type of material. It's, it's
We'll call that A, A7?
Yes, sir.
We're gonna be at A7 and whenever he's shown, he'll buy the copy.
Yeah. Email it to
A7? I thought we're at A6.
A6 we just marked actually as the second, as she's
Yeah, I see.
Oh, and I thought that was
Of the second plan set, which has the sign with the directional sign on.
And what would that be in place of, that, that material?
The gray, you know, that's a clapboard or a horizontal board type material. This would be in place of that. So what you see as gray on the, on the elevation would now be that gray brick. Yes.
Okay, and it would look like a
All the way to the roof?
All the way to
Sorry?
All the way to the roof?
Yes.
Because before you said maybe
Whatever's, whatever's gray.
Whenever, whatever is this light colored gray right now, we can make that. We can do whatever you like. Point is, we can replace, this is a similar, it's actually, there's similar boards. Sheet material that goes up on the wall. So we can replace this with that brick.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have another question.
Go ahead.
Yeah. So I just want to put a finer point on what Mr. Ronio asked before in terms of the bank drive-through traffic versus the 25 number that we talked about just now with what would be the increase for the food service drive-through. Do you have a number on the bank during peak hours for the increase in car traffic? Because I would imagine that you're not getting as much pass by.
Yeah.
Right?
Yes, and it's included in our report. We did include a table just for a comparison to show. A two-window bank by IT standards would generate about 17 peak hour trips in the morning, about 50 trips in the evening, and 50 also on Saturday, peak hour. So
But is there, is there any division of that, the way that there was for the food service?
Yeah.
Or no?
No, there is. I mean, all users, all retail users generally have some volume of pass-by traffic. I, I don't know what it is specifically. Yeah, I don't know what it is specifically for a bank, but I, I just, you know, based on experience, I would assume it's lower than that of a convenience fast food restaurant. So what that quantity is, I can't tell you right now. But, you know, no, a bank generates less site traffic during each peak hour, but also less pass-by traffic. But the restaurant would do more.
All right, no more questions from the board?
I have one question.
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry, Tom.
I don't like, see if I can articulate this as best I can. And I guess it would be directed to you. Talking about the Plainfield exit, there are two lanes there where cars are entering and exiting Taco Bell. Abutting those two lanes is Solento's Tavern. And there are two lanes where cars are entering and exiting Solento's Tavern parking lot. So we have a maximum of 16 cars at the same time weaving in and out of this small space. Should there be a special signs put up, some traffic direction about that particular intersection? And I ask this of our experts as well as you, sir. As I say, it's unusual because there's four lanes of traffic within maybe a 60-foot spread.
And you have Goddard School.
Yeah, that's another, that's another one.
And that had a traffic jam when March
So there's an awful lot of traffic in that one point, going all different ways.
Yeah, the, the Solento driveway and, and the Valley Mall and Goddard School are all further south of our proposed, our existing driveway that's served the bank. There's, I, I don't know the specific distance between the two.
Solento's, I think it's right next to it. I think it's on the other side.
The property is adjacent to that driveway.
Directly across from our access is the, is the PNC Bank. And to the north is the LuCoil.
No, I'm not, I'm talking, let's see, that would be what?
South.
South.
Yeah, sure. Oh, yeah.
You don't see it.
It's off the board, but
The mic, please. Grab the mic.
Yeah, so to the south of this board, you'll see the access that currently serves the bank and potentially will serve the Taco Bell.
So then there's the grassy area and then
This grass, and then probably double of what you see here until you get to the Solento driveway.
Right.
And then you have the Valley Mall. And then you have the Goddard School.
Right.
So you don't see that as an issue?
I don't. I mean, it's an existing driveway that serves the bank and, you know, aligns across from the bank across the street, which is, you know, where you want your driveways to align. So now I don't really see it as a major concern.
So, and along those lines, we try, when we're designing roads and driveways, we have to try and strike a balance. We want the signs that need to be there, but not so many signs that it causes clutter and distraction.
Right.
So really, there should be stop signs on the driveways, which in their case, there is one there today. The only recommendation I would have is I'd like to see that directional sign increased to probably around the range of 30 by 30, plus or minus a few inches. A 30 by 30 sign is typical for the size of a stop sign or a lay-new sign that's there. That allows you to see it a little further away at the size they have it. It's about, not much bigger than a no parking sign that you really can't read until you're right on top of it. So this is one of those odd situations where I'd rather see a slightly larger sign for the directional sign, just so that the drivers can see it a little further in advance.
And make the decision.
And know to make the turn, especially in this case because if you're coming up Plainfield, you can't see the building.
Right.
That's the only thing that's, that one sign is going to be the only thing telling you to turn into that driveway and not go up to the line.
So what's the dimensions of the sign you would recommend?
Roughly 30 by 30. I think it might end up being
Not 30, you're not talking 30 feet.
No, 30 inches, I'm sorry.
Making short.
You know, plus or minus a few inches. I think it might end up be 30 inches by 28. I didn't skit, do the math.
But the same basic design?
Same general design, just scaled up to be approximately two, two and a half feet.
Would that be acceptable?
Yes.
That, that's the Plainfield Road 1 that's 18 by 20 right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, should it be lit?
No, I don't think so. I don't want to make any more, you know, I don't want to overdo it. It is a directional sign. It isn't meant to be their primary advertising. So I think
And the headlights all in it.
And we thought, yeah, I think our testimony last night was, we weren't looking to illuminate. By the way, we normally like to, but we were trying to keep it subdued. The headlights, we thought it was insufficient.
Sorry.
Something came flying.
Are you calling things?
I had it on my rubber pad and it just
But anyway, that was the
Okay. Well, I, I like the suggestion by the traffic engineer because we don't want people jaming on their brakes, oh, it's the Taco Bell and then turning in. So, yes.
And I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't look through your report. So if it's in there, I apologize for making you repeat. But in your study, do you determine the access point to the site in terms of the number of trips? Or is it just trips to the, to the site total?
Yeah, no, we, we use the reference material to determine how many trips are, there are. And then we route them to the site via the two driveways and through the intersection.
So what percentage would you say are coming up that site, that driveway as opposed to the other driveway or the other, other trips?
I can do a quick little, the, the primary access we feel is going to be on Valley. Somewhere along the lines, and this is not exact, probably like a two-third to one-third Valley to Plainfield.
Okay.
A member of the public, would you like to ask questions of the traffic engineer?
Charles Renowitz Millington. Question one. I've been trained. If there was no drive-through, would the traffic volume projections change and to what degree?
Yeah, I don't have the specific numbers on that to provide you with what IT calculates for a fast food restaurant without a drive-through. But based on my experience on, on doing a number of restaurants, there's really not a material difference. And ironically, in some instances, the numbers are actually higher when you don't have a drive-through. So
And why was that?
I, I don't know the answer to that question, but the data just reveals that in some instances. So there's not a material difference with, with or without a drive-through for a fast food restaurant.
It's a quick serve restaurant?
Quick service restaurant.
There you go.
So based upon that response, would your business stay the same without a drive-through?
I, I'm not the expert for that, for that question.
Oh, right. You're, you're only, you're only the traffic engineer, correct?
Yeah, I can't speak to
So
success, the success of a quick service
But as far as you know, the cars going in and out, the bus, the, the amount of people buying stuff might be the same, but the traffic might increase without, is that what you're saying?
I mean, the drive-through is a convenience, you know, for, especially now with mobile ordering, a time convenience, a convenience during inclement weather, a convenience for parents with children in car seats that don't want to shut their kids out of the car, elderly, yeah, not to mention COVID, which, you know, the drive-through businesses were really helpful in that instance. So, you know, it's, it's a different type of business that you acquire with a drive-through.
Thank you.
Question two. What are the traffic projection volumes from 11:00 PM to 2:00 AM on the weekends?
I don't have an answer to that question. As traffic engineers, we typically study the peak hours because our concern is whether or not there's going to be impacts off-site. During those hours, I assume the volumes would be extremely low as, and the roadway volumes are also low. So there's sufficient capacity at the driveways and along the roadways.
Taking your answer into consideration, you're saying that your main concern was the impact on the surrounding areas during peak hours of morning and, and evening?
When the roadways are most confined.
Of most congested.
Yep.
So the traffic projections from 11:00 PM to 2:00 AM had no impact on your decision to the operating hours of this Taco Bell?
I, I can't answer that question. I'm not going to operate the Taco Bell.
Question four. Is it standard practice to evaluate traffic based upon another applicant study?
Yeah, I mean, absolutely. If a, if a professional engineer has collected traffic count data at a site adjacent to something that you're looking at, it's certainly a source of reference, yes.
So in other words, you would trust their findings because they're a fellow traffic expert?
If they're a licensed engineer and they've been reviewed by other peers, yes, it's acceptable.
If such applicant is rejected based upon your reliance on their study, what happens then?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the, I don't understand the question.
Okay. Your traffic study was based upon a current applicant at Walgreens adjacent to. And if that application is rejected by this board or the planning board or whatever, and your study was based upon their study, but their application got rejected, where does it stand with your study?
I think that's hypothetical, to be honest with you. I don't know what the
And the data doesn't change, right?
Yeah, they Yeah, the, the traffic data doesn't change. The reason for the denial could be anything.
Yeah, yeah, but if, if their study is based upon the traffic volume for this 87-unit assisted living and 13 units for memory dementia, and that goes away, that means the traffic volume decreases, doesn't it?
Right.
I would assume so. Would that be accurate?
Yes.
Well, is that a, would that be detrimental or beneficial to your, your analysis?
It would just reduce the delay that's existing along the roadways.
So it would just reduce the volume?
Correct.
Beneficial.
So based upon my original question, relying on another study, I mean, how can you, how, how can people make a decision on the traffic volume if the basis is questionable on the applicant you're relying on?
I don't think, I think what Mr. Poliniak already said earlier is the fact that he's relying on a study that is done by one of his peers and another.
Right. Now I understand.
Another engineer who stood up here and gave his qualifications and was reviewed by professionals.
Well, well, yeah.
Analysis or well. And the reality is, if that project is denied, as Mr. Poliniak said, it takes less volume of traffic and to quote somebody, it's probably beneficial on an overall traffic perspective.
Any more questions?
So, yeah, so we can assume that if the study they're relying on gets rejected, we're all better off. Is that a correct assumption?
I just wanted to get clear that I'm relying upon their traffic count data and not the entire.
No, we understood that.
You're, you're not relying on whether the other application gets granted or denied. For whatever reason, it gets granted or denied. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
You just rely upon his counting cars and.
Raw data, correct.
The raw data.
I would like to add from my office, and we reviewed that application as well. I independently reviewed the base counts that they provide, that in both studies provided to confirm that they're, they're consistent with other historical data from either my office or the DOT or the county. I've checked to make sure that their counts make sense, aren't, are inconsistent with other resources. If I didn't think they were, I would have.
You would have said.
Had them do new counts. The idea of letting them use that data is it is conservative because it assumes that other application is approved. If it's not approved, then that's that many less cars on the road. If the driveway works with the cars, the driveway will still work without them.
We're going to take a five-minute break.
Ed, do you mind if I ask a real quick question before that? Because it's, it's just a follow-up to this whole thing. And I think I know the answer, but I just want to be sure.
Go ahead.
For Mr. Poliniak, you've, I think your focus, tell me if I'm wrong, is on how this impacts the traffic flow and the signal at Plainfield and Valley. Because, you know, we've all experienced that Saturday morning when you're rushing around to do your irons and you're backed up from, you know, the second light of Chop Right to Plainfield, right? That happens.
Yes.
So is that what your focus is? The main focus is to see how this application of this building here is going to impact the Valley Road traffic? Is that what we're talking about?
Yes, it's twofold. It's one, to look at the signal and see the impacts to it, and then to review the operations of the driveways to ensure that they'll work adequately.
Okay. Got it. And then, sorry, one more. And that was, I just saw what you were talking about. But that was, never mind. I lost it. I'm sorry. I had another question. I didn't write it down, but I'll ask you later.
It's okay.
Five-minute recess.
Thank you.
I declare that the meeting is readjourned, I mean we.
In.
Live.
Yeah, live. I'm sorry, back in, on the record. Okay, are we done with the traffic?
No, I'm good, I'm good.
Yeah, he's here.
Thank you.
All right, what's your next expert?
I have no idea, so.
You're good at it, there you go. You swear to God or affirm that the testimony about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
You know, you're looking more like John McConaughey every day.
That's a compliment, I don't know.
His colleague, his colleague. It's a compliment.
Matthew Flynn, F L Y N N, business address is 101 Gibralter Drive, Morris Plains, New Jersey. Sure, my education comes from Rutgers, I have my master's degree in planning and public policy. I also have my national certification, which is the AICP certification for planners. Yeah.
And your licenses are all up to date?
Correct.
And they're in New Jersey?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Any other states?
No.
How many boards have you testified in front of?
Probably around three dozen or so.
Okay, fine, we declared you as a planning expert.
Thank you. Yes. Sure, so I'll pass this around, exhibit A8 is a three-page exhibit consisting of some aerial drone shots taken by my office on April 17th, 2023. There's not, so maybe.
We can share, we'll share.
Just 10, I think.
Thank you.
While that's being passed around, exhibit A8 again is a series of aerial drone shots taken by my office, April 17th, 2023. Basically, the main variance that we're seeking here tonight is that D1 use variance for a non-permitted drive-through associated with a restaurant. And basically, the purpose of sheet one here is to show the subject site in the middle here, already fitted out with a drive-through that served in a pre-existing bank facility. And to the left of that, there is that Burger King that also has a drive-through. One of the board members at the last meeting noted that there is only one restaurant with a drive-through in Long Hill, and that happens to be right next door to the subject site. So by virtue of the site's context and surroundings, I would say that the property will have compatibility with its neighbors. Not only do we have that Burger King that has a drive-through, we also have a gas station on the other side of us. While not technically a drive-through, it is a site that has vehicles moving in and out of that site. So in essence, it functions pretty much the same way as a drive-through. We also have that Walgreens, which would be catty-corner to that drive-through, catty-corner to that gas station, which also has a drive-through. And there is that PNC Bank across Plainfield, which also has a drive-through. So again, even though this land use being a restaurant with a drive-through is not specifically permitted here, there are some significant or substantial characteristics of the surrounding properties that I would say lend itself to making this particular site suitable to having a drive-through. Also, by virtue of its condition, we are looking at a property that's almost double the minimum lot area in the B D zone. And again, we are, we are looking at a property that was previously existing as a drive-through with that bank and basically using that, that drive-through facility or that, those lanes that are already out there today. So again, it's something that, that we're working with, with what's out there today. And I'll just go over to sheet two, this is just a straight, straight-down shot of the subject site. Again, getting a view of the, the drive-through on the property as well as that drive-through on that adjacent Burger King. Again, this configuration of that drive-through will remain largely the same as what's out there today. And finally, sheet three just flips that drone around showing that, that accessway along Plainfield or from, to and from Plainfield that gives access to the site currently and will continue to give access to the property. Again, this is a substantially oversized lot that I would say lends itself very well to this drive-through configuration. So all of that goes towards the site suitability standard, which is, I would say, the, the, the main standard that we have to go by for that D1 use variance, looking at a use that's not permitted here. The, then we look at the positive criteria or the so-called purposes of zoning. We heard our traffic expert testify to all of the benefits of a drive-through facility like this, improved operational efficiencies, order processing, traffic flow, safety, convenience, ADA accessibility, more accommodating to people that might have disabilities, people that might have a car full of children, if maybe inclement weather, things like that, maybe a hot day with a car with, with some dogs in it, I don't know. Having a drive-through benefits a whole range of, of people and patrons. Also, not to mention the fact that it, drive-throughs have become an increasingly popular option since COVID. Also, in terms of the benefits of the application, this is a site design that's responsive to modern trends and technologies in this field, in this land use category. Renovations will give the site a fresh new look, bringing the site back into functional use, we are looking at a vacant bank. There was some market study done showing that, that there are several vacant bank facilities in the area. So replacing something that might be void at this point or less desirable or less in demand with something that is in higher demand, not expanding the existing development footprint or otherwise impacting the rural nature of the township. The increase in impervious coverage is less than 1,000 square feet, so nominal increase in that regard. And again, harmony with the surrounding uses that we did see all of those drive-throughs all around us. All of the above promote purposes of the municipal land use law, including purpose A, promotion of the general welfare, purpose G, variety of uses in appropriate locations, purpose I, desirable visual environment, as well as purpose M, efficient use of land. Shifting over to the negative criteria for that D1 use variance, no substantial detriment to the public. I would say the main consideration in that regard would be the, the traffic flow and possible congestion. All of that has been addressed by our traffic expert, and I don't think that there are any outstanding issues in that regard. This is a property that's remote from residential, we are requesting some setback variants that I'll get into, but none of those variances are relative to any residential properties. Again, going back to that compatibility with all those other drive-throughs. And we are proposing a building that's approximately 25% smaller than what's out there today. So I would say that all of that speaks to that negative criteria in terms of no substantial detriment to the public, no substantial detriment to the zone itself. The use itself as a restaurant is permitted here, again, we are requesting that D1 use variance because we are proposing that drive-through option. Importantly, I'll just note, I know the board has been told this by prior witnesses, drive-up windows are permitted for banks and pharmacies. And again, we do see that abound in this area. Again, use relief relates to a specific property that is surrounded by many other drive-throughs. And one of the board members did mention the master plan, there was a, a master plan excerpt that talks about that B D zone, protecting the rural character of the area, and also the vision statement for the B D zone for pedestrian orientation and walkability. I would say that from an aesthetic standpoint, we are proposing something that is aesthetically pleasing. Again, the drive-through component already exists today, so not introducing something new. The applicant again has addressed any potential negative impacts on traffic patterns. And again, going back to that, what I said about having a convenient dining options for residents and visitors to support accessibility. Going, going to that master plan vision for pedestrian orientation and walkability, I'll just say that having visitors travel to the town from elsewhere is always going to be a good thing. So we're always going to have people traveling into town by car, and this gives people that are coming into town to grab a quick meal and continue to wherever they're going in the town. All of that goes towards that D1 use variance, the positive criteria, the negative criteria, and mainly that site suitability standard. Going into the C relief, we are requesting two C variances that are unrelated to signage, including maximum front yard. We're proposing 80 feet and 79 feet, whereas 50 feet is the maximum permitted. It's a slight improvement over what's out there today, a .1-foot improvement. Trash enclosure setbacks, side setback of 4.3 feet versus 10 feet is required, and a rear setback of zero feet versus five feet. That zero-foot setback is actually a setback to our own property, it's that portion of the property that has that, that drive-through. Correct, so that's what I would call a technical variance, since it is, it is to our own property. The side setback again is not to any residential properties. Number of wall signs, we're proposing two versus one, we have established, I think, that the facade artwork does not trigger any additional variances beyond that. Wall sign area, discounting the facade artwork, we're looking at 41.25 square feet proposed, whereas 18 square feet is, is the maximum that's permitted here. Basically, the way that the ordinance reads is that 1.5% of the gross floor area is permitted, or 50 square feet, whichever is less. And then that goes down to half that once we are proposing a ground sign. We are still below that maximum of 50 square feet, which I think is important here. Freestanding sign setbacks, 7.2 feet from Valley Road, 10 feet is, is, is required.
I'm sorry, was that one eliminated?
Oh, okay, scratch that. And then finally, that design standard for appearance of signs, that's that, that faux wood or, or actual wood that, that the chairman was, was talking about, that's required for signage, whereas we're proposing plastic. What I'll say to that is this is prototypical Taco Bell signage, so in terms of brand familiarity, this is something that customers are used to. Also, the fact that this is something that is prototypical to the brand and to the company, if this sign needs to be replaced for whatever reason, if the sign face needs to be replaced, this is something that can be done expeditiously, given that this is something that Taco Bell has readily available to them, as opposed to this wood or faux wood product that's, that's being requested by the board. Also, it's compatible with signage in the immediate area, we did see, I saw two wooden signs within about 600 feet of the property. And all of the rest, we saw about 10 other ones that were plastic, so I think that what's being proposed is not going to stand out in that regard. So finally, the planning rationale for C variances, it all comes down to that C2 balancing test where by the benefits of the application as a whole substantially outweigh any detriments. All the positive criteria from the D1 use variance carry forth, all C relief is necessary to effectuate all of those benefits. So moving to the negative criteria, again, we're remote from residential, none of the setback variances relate to residential. Again, signage is typical of this land use, it's necessary to effectuate the drive-through that's being proposed. It's tasteful and simple, it's not overpowering the site. And again, the, the wall signage is still below that 50-square-foot maximum for any property in this, in this, in this, in the town. And I'll just say, in terms of all that C relief, none of the C relief is relative to an excessively large building. Again, proposing a building that's 25% smaller than what's out there today, so none of the C relief relates to overdevelopment from a mass and scale standpoint. So all said, I would say that this is an appropriate application, going back to that site suitability standard. When we look at what's around this particular property, we see a lot of drive-throughs. And again, the only restaurant with a drive-through is right next door to us. So I think that this is not going to stand out as being a deviation from what's permitted in zoning. It's going to enhance the aesthetic and functionality of this area, and approval is warranted. So with that, I'm here for questions.
Okay, so my questions really relate to the D1 use variance. You said that a drive-through is not explicitly permitted, but it's actually, not only is it not explicitly permitted, but it's explicitly prohibited. So, which is almost like a double whammy. And so I, the other thing is, you know, the Valley Road master plan recognized that the area, right now, the signage doesn't match, the architecture doesn't match. But the idea of, of that master plan element was to rectify that situation, right? So there may not be that many wooden signs out there, but the idea is, in the future, let's try to get them, right? So that, that's one issue. But I guess, you know, you're familiar with the Medici case, I'm sure, right? And which is the second prong of the negative criteria, which is, you know, obviously, if this use isn't permitted, then you really can't reconcile it with the zoning or the zone plan because it's not permitted. And, and the regulations in the zoning are, are for uses that are permitted. So, you know, the real test or the question I would have would be, you know, 2015 was when the downtown Valley master plan was adopted. Can you talk about, one of the things that's in the Medici case, which is, have there been significant changes on the local, regional level since 2015 which would warrant, you know, essentially that the master plan hasn't caught up to the, and the zoning hasn't caught up to the current times? And can you address that?
Sure, and just to your first comment about the, the wooden signs, the only thing I'll add to that is, the, the wall art, I think, is an aesthetic upgrade in and of itself, which is not a requirement per zoning. So in a way, that's kind of going, I'll, I'll use the term going above and beyond. So the only reason I say that is to say that there has been some aesthetic thought that went into this project, even though it's not giving that, that wooden sign.
I understand that you, you think it's attractive and everything, that's fine, and that's fine. And it may be, but I think the question is that the master plan at that time was trying to sort of create a sense of place, a cohesiveness of, and a pedestrian friendliness to those, that downtown area. But in any event, so I guess, yeah, if you can answer the other questions.
Sure, so I guess to answer your question as specifically as I can, like I said, we have noted some vacancies in terms of banks in the area. So again, this was a property that was previously developed as a bank, so again, replacing something that's less in demand with something that's more in demand. Also, going back to that comment I made about COVID, making drive-throughs a more desirable option in recent times. I think also, I think we can also talk about that a little bit. But I think in terms of the negative criteria, we also have to look at what's out there today and how are we substantially deviating from, one, the zone plan obviously, and two, what's currently built on the property today. And we look at, when we look at whether this is a substantial departure from the zone plan, I think, again, it's important to note that drive-up windows are permitted for certain uses, including banks. And in that, we are looking at a use that might not ever come to fruition on this property, being that it's a less-in-demand land use. But suffice it to say that drive-up windows are permitted use for other land uses. So just in terms of going to that substantial detriment or departure from the zone plan, number one, we see drive-up windows here, and we see restaurants as a permitted use here. So, and then we also have that compatibility element with everything that's happening around us, all of that, I think, goes towards the negatives.
Go ahead.
Can I just speak to one point?
Yeah.
Because I did, I did just clarify one thing, because it was part of your initial discussion. We are amenable to, to modifying the signs to provide either, either a wooden sign or a foam type of sign that you had mentioned in chairman, some sort of restructure, and that would both be the freestanding sign as well as the wall signage, and all signage would be down with big circle.
So I understand, to the extent where it actually would do, eliminate the variance relief needed?
We would, and we would just ask that, if the board were inclined to grant approval, that we'd be able to work with the professionals to come up with the sign.
To design the sign.
Dimensions would basically be the same, or even smaller, we could go for anything bigger, but we would modify the sign material, so we'd make it plastic.
Would you still want the word breakfast, would you want a drive-through, what would you sign, you know, I mean, it's a.
We're thinking the same size, Taco Bell is most important to us.
Fine.
Breakfast is something they've been trying to attract, they've been trying to grow, and that's probably the reason Mr. Dealey just thinks it's worse than life, that's what showed up on the.
The only reason I'm talking about the wording, because when Walgreens came before us, they forgot to ask for the word drive-through on their sign. Now they have to come through, and they, I guess they don't want to do it because it'd be a big expense. So I just want to make sure you get what you want and you want what you get, because, you know, you don't want to say, oh, we should have put the word drive-through in there, and we didn't.
Mr. Dealey, we are good with the sign as it is showing breakfast, or would you put the words wrong?
Or both, you could put both on it. Okay, all right, just want to make sure, because I don't, you know.
Okay, I just, a couple, a couple other questions, that's fine, that's fine. So you mentioned a market study, which I, I never had an opportunity to review, but do you know if your client ever tried to re-tenant it for a pharmacy or a bank that does permit drive-throughs?
I'm unaware.
So my, so my client is not the owner of the property.
Okay.
But I am aware of, we, we are not the only tenant that they look at, I believe, from a size perspective, it's large enough for a modern pharmacy facility. And no interest from banks is what we understand from the owner, which is Dr. Mahetta, and Shree, Long Hill, Shree Sterling, Developmenters, I S.
Okay, so just, if you can, I, I think you've already provided this testimony, but just, just to go back to this question, whoever wrote the zoning or when they wrote the zoning, they, they really didn't want drive-throughs with restaurants because they, they listed it on this explicitly prohibited. So, I mean, what do you, what do you say to that, that, how do you, how do you answer that?
Yeah, so I think from a zoning standpoint, it's, it's impossible for zoning to take into account every single piece of property in the town. And here, again, we are looking at a specific piece of property that's bordered by a gas station on one side and a fast food restaurant with a, with a, or quick service restaurant with a drive-through on the other side. And I don't think that, you know, zoning, really, like I said, it can't anticipate every single land use configuration that we see in town. Going back to the fact that it was expressly prohibited, you know, since 2015, like you said, you know, I think COVID, I, I don't think I can really stress that enough. It has significantly changed buyer preferences and consumer habits. I know for a fact that, I mean, I personally know several people that, for a while, were afraid to, to go into a, a public place. And some of these habits actually have, have, have remained. You know, we, we are seeing drive-through upgrades significantly all the time now in this field, because some of those habits, like I said, have not really gone away, so some people have gotten to that habit of using the drive-through now. And we're seeing that, that people continue to, to do so. And so, and also I would say that these land uses have gotten very good at accommodating that, that drive-through activity. But again, going back to the fact that this is not permitted per zoning, I think that it's really important to just look at what's happening all around the property. To the extent that the master plan wants that pedestrian-oriented and walkable environment, again, I don't think that we can turn a blind eye to the fact that, again, we are next to a gas station and a fast food restaurant. Not to say that the, the visions of that master plan are moot, but we certainly do have to, to look at that and consider how we can contribute to what's out there today.
Okay, those are my only questions for right now, Mr. Chair.
Board member questions?
I have a question about the placement of the, I don't know that it would be traffic, the placement of the crosswalk.
Yeah, talk into the microphone, pull that down.
Placement of the crosswalk, as I noticed in your comparison to what's around us, right? We don't have any crosswalks that we can see at the gas station because people stay in their cars. We have crosswalks attached to the sidewalk at the Burger King, and when we look overhead, we see a sidewalk, I guess, going, I guess you'd say it's, it's already on the other side of the main traffic entering and exiting the complex. So yours is, or if it's, is that where it's still going to be, the crosswalk? Or would you put it in someplace where people might not be hurt?
Yes, we are proposing the crosswalk as it's indicated on exhibit A3. Sure, it's located where I'm pointing to.
Is that the same or different location?
That's how it exists in the existing conditions today, there's a sidewalk that's there with associated crosswalk, we're maintaining that in the existing location.
Okay.
James, can you take another look at that? Is that, you may want to look at the exhibit and your site plan, I'm not sure that's correct.
The site plan and the drone pictures are two different things.
Site plan and the aerial photo.
That, so, so the reason, the sidewalk exists in the same location on the western side. However, we've added two additional parking spaces, and so we feel we've actually provided a better location. So if you're looking at, on sheet two, along the existing bank property, you'll see that the crosswalk actually connects to the ADA ramp and then the associated sidewalk ramp. We've added two additional parking spaces directly across from where you see that configuration today. And we then connected it, I think, in a more appropriate location, sidewalk to sidewalk with associated ramp that didn't exist today. But in context and how it flows and functions, it's in the same location.
So, so James, you're, the existing configuration crosses interior to the parking lot of the drive aisle? And the proposed crosses the driveway in before you're in the parking lot?
I don't think I follow you, but again, the location of the crosswalk and how it crosses the drive aisle is the same pattern as the existing conditions. We just moved it up approximately, and I, when I say up, I mean north, approximately 18 feet to accommodate the additional parking spaces that were added.
You're, you're connecting the end of one sidewalk to the beginning of the other.
That's exactly right.
Yeah, there is a difference. Yeah, so there isn't, the crosswalk does change.
Yes, I was talking about the pattern of the crosswalk, but yes, it, it is moving north, correct.
And you deem that to be safer in that location?
It, it's as proposed, I feel comfortable with the design.
Any other questions about the planner or?
From our own professionals, I do, when we're.
What was it?
From our own planner, I do. When we, when we, when it's appropriate.
You know, I have a peer, but maybe, maybe you must ask him now.
Yeah, that's okay, I'm just wondering if you, in your opinion, LU 152 four, does that apply to this type of building that we're talking about now?
Can you tell me what the name of the, what the name of the section is?
Well, the section is Building Materials Color and Texture.
Okay, it's a good question, I was looking at that earlier. And what that are, those are design guidelines, and they are, just in essence, they're guidelines. They, you can't necessarily, and Steve can tell me if I'm wrong, but you, you can't, my understanding is you really can't enforce them. They're what you would. my understanding is you really can't enforce them. They're what you would prefer.
It does say strongly encourage.
It's strongly encourage, it's what you encourage and prefer, because there are a couple of ways that this application doesn't, does not meet those guidelines, but, but yes, to answer-
The number of materials on the exterior, limited to two, you know, strongly encouraging brick and mortar type and limiting the colors, it's all in there. I mean, it's-
Right.
It's like, so this is really, it's totally opposed to this section of our ordinance.
Correct, but, you know, as I said, this is, this is what perhaps, you know, the township is saying what we would prefer, but they can't really, there's no enforcement mechanism.
It doesn't require variance relief.
It does not.
Or site plan exception relief.
No, and it's all in-
But it could be used as a-
A suggestion.
A suggestion or encouragement when someone is seeking a variance.
Yeah.
I mean-
When one is ma, Liz, when one is measuring the positive or negative criteria, particularly with respect to the bulk C variance relief, benefits substantially outweighing the, the detriments, and it's a balancing test, and if aesthetics is part of the equation, then perhaps that would be relevant to that balancing analysis.
I would agree.
Okay. Do you have questions?
Thank you.
The, Liz, on page seven, those two, the illumination of ground signs and wall signs, are we covered so that there's no deviation relief necessary?
That's correct. I, I think the testimony of the engineer at the, the earlier-
Over.
Right, well, they're-
Are you downloading the ground sign and the public?
And we covered your one through 22?
Yes.
Three through 22?
Yes.
Okay, good. And, Mr. Flynn, the, the, um-
Since you mentioned that architectural and design elements and desirable visual environment are all part of the, your analysis and your professional opinion that the benefits substantially outweigh the detriments for the C2 relief, for all the bulk variance relief, and is also part and parcel of some of the MLUL purposes like design, a desirable visual environment, even with respect to the positive criteria for the D1 use variance relief, would you concur that the architectural brick alternative, A7, I think it was, would be preferable and supportive of your position that the benefits substantially outweigh the detriments for this proposal?
Yeah, I would say that that's a, that's a good compromise that the applicant's willing to make here. And just to the board member's comments about those design guidelines, I just want to note that none of the C relief relates to an oversized building. It's just excessive front yard and trash enclosure location. All of the other relief is signage-related. So when we, when we talk about the compliance of the building itself, we are looking at a building that is substantially compliant from a mass and scale standpoint and shrinking down what's there today. So I don't see this as being an obnoxiously, or obnoxious structure in that regard. And, again, just going back to, I think, the, the engineer's testimony or, or the client's testimony, that if this building looks like what those guidelines are suggesting, it would be very hard to tell that this is, in fact, a Taco Bell. We would likely need even more signage to, to call that to attention. So, again, what we're proposing is, I think, a, a good compromise and balance.
Oh, I have one other. The, the side yard setback that you had, was that, that was for the trash enclosure?
Correct.
4.3 versus 10 feet?
Yes.
At some point, I had a note here, someone-
And then it's zero, and then it's zero to 4.6.
For the rear yard.
Which is the property through which we have the easement.
The easement, but it's still nevertheless a, a property lot, a separate lot, so.
Yes.
But there was mention of a side yard setback to a canopy.
Yes, oh, sorry.
That was that drive-through canopy.
Right, it was to the drive-through canopy. It hadn't been called out on the site plan. They did call it out and they are fine.
Oh, oh, meaning, when you say "fine," meaning it actually is setback sufficiently?
It's sufficiently setback. It doesn't trigger a variance.
And you're still using, having the same, similar canopy?
It's not, it's really just a small projection. It is not, it's not the projection that you see when you drive under a micro projector, actually. It's not, it does not extend that far. That probably would require variance.
Interesting.
It may have gotten variance relief originally.
The, the existing canopy did incur, or, you know, intrude into the side yard. The proposed canopy does not.
Okay.
I have a question.
Other for me, Mr. Chairman.
And I don't think you have an architect coming, right?
Correct.
Okay, so we have the engineer who talked a little bit about the-
Yep.
-wall panels, we're going to call them?
Yep.
And the planner can talk about that as well?
I can, I can call either one of them back, so.
Okay, well-
I know we finished our engineer, but we didn't know if he was here.
Sure, well, your planner used the word "obnoxious," so I figured I'd talk about those panels for a little while. Since they're no longer as logo-specific obnoxious, they're still kind of these large colorful panels on what you now have as a pseudo-brickish kind of looking structure with, you know, the purple Taco Bell color, of course Taco Bell signs. So what is the importance of keeping them if there might be something that's less obnoxious to put there or not put there?
Does anyone have any questions?
Sure, so the wall signs or wall art, as we've been calling them, are something that's been consistent with the new-
We have to decide if they're signs or art now, right?
The wall art that we've been calling it, referring to exhibit A5, is something that's been on many of the new applications as part of the branding for Taco Bell. Again, these are not items that are seen or made to be visible from the road. They are at eye level. They're along the back of the drive-through, and Taco Bell feels that it enhances the aesthetic of their building, and based on their height and proximity to the roadway, I don't feel that they're going to be something that really is, something that's a visual impact. Other than those people that go to Taco Bell, and if they want Taco Bell, then that's something that, to them, maybe aesthetically is pleasing.
They're facing the, the parking area, right?
The elevation that is on the board A5 is the east elevation along the drive-through.
So it will be buffered by landscaping, landscaping and the fence.
And there's, there's one facing the park.
And then there was one, like, rainbow thing on the backside. That's still, that's still there, because I didn't see it today, but I saw it last week, last time.
So just the one facing the driveway of the parking area is what you're showing there, and then the back of the building? Is that, is that what that one's showing? Is that what the one's showing there?
The east, sorry, the west elevation is the elevation facing the main parking field.
And then you have one wall art there?
And then there's one wall art on the southern elevation which faces the drive-through entrance.
What's the purpose of that wall art in the back of the building?
We can eliminate that, Chairman. It's just, we came with the design. I think the other panels are more important, but Mr. Dealey just whispered that to me, so let's-
Okay, consider it with, eliminate it.
It's not really visible.
No, it isn't, but it's another thing on the building that changes the, you know, color.
Yep, exactly.
So the applicant's stipulating to eliminating the wall art on the rear of the building?
That, we're in a southern elevation, that's right.
So what will that then, just the black walls?
Ray brick.
Ray brick?
Yeah, ray brick.
That's got a darker element.
Yeah, it's, it's actually shown darker on there.
So I, I believe that what would happen is that would be eliminated, and you would just see the coloring of the facade and type of facade that's behind it, which is a fiber cement panel. And, again, that's not just a, a wall of fiber cement. It, it's meant to look like, you can't really see it from afar, but if you look at it up close, it is boxed out, so there is some architectural feel to it.
There's some pattern to it.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions?
I missed, I did for the traffic, but that's where I fall.
You might as well, yeah, he had, like, Vice Chairman has a question for your traffic person.
Yep.
Thank you for getting back up. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I will, I will.
Conversation came up about the area, and the fact that there's currently another quick-service restaurant there next door, Burger King.
Mm-hmm.
And we were talking, you were talking earlier about additional traffic to your quick-service restaurant. Was any consideration given to the fact that since there's one restaurant right there, bringing another restaurant doesn't necessarily double, but may actually have a multiplier of, say, 2.5 times the number of traffic for, do you follow what I'm trying to say? Like, I want something to eat. I don't know if I want a burger or a taco. Well, I'm going to go this way to Sterling. I'm not going to go that way to New Providence. So you might have more people coming just to the area and then deciding as they get here. Was that considered at all?
If I understand your question correctly, I, I think that goes to the new trips that are anticipated.
Mm-hmm.
The 50% of them, you know, are passed by. Those other 50, those are 50%, that are new are exactly what you speak of. It's someone saying, you know, from another place, "New Taco Bell, I'm going to get Taco Bell tonight," not, you know, just leaving their front door and going to get it and go and return home. That's a new trip. So I don't think the fact that there's an adjacent restaurant impacts it in any manner. I mean, maybe perhaps there could be a slight reduction, because there's only a certain amount of people that want to eat something on the way home, and now they either choose Burger King or Taco Bell as opposed to just Burger King.
Okay, so there's no big multiplier effect. It's just going to be-
No, I don't think so. I don't think so.
Fair enough. Address.
Before we leave-
I have another, I have another-
Wait, wait, one-
I have another traffic question.
One, one second before we get to the traffic. Members of the public are once, twice, three times, are there any members of the public? Nobody's out in the hall? I'm serious. I want to make sure, because I am not ignoring any, I don't want to ignore any members of the public that might still be out there. Okay, that's fine.
Or may.
So there's no members of the public for questions for the engine, for the planner that just testified? Okay, I'm closing it for the public. All right, so go ahead, what's your question?
Okay, back to the crosswalk, which we talked about briefly, and I understand it's not going to be the way it is in the existing drone picture. It's more like the plan. I just keep looking, because this overhead drone picture has a shot of the Burger King as well, and I look at the way that sidewalk doesn't cross the parking lot at all. It only crosses the drive-through traffic, which I would think would be considerably less traffic than that's going in and out of the parking lot. So you have a crosswalk going from sidewalk to sidewalk across the parking lot where, I don't know, 25 cars are coming every hour, and I don't know if they're all going through the drive-through, but a percentage of them are going through, a lesser percentage is going through the drive-through. So wouldn't it be better to have people walk across, and I don't know the answer to this, is it better to have, the way Burger King has it, walking across the drive-through area and not through the parking lot, you know, and, or the way it's proposed?
When you're looking at crossings and crosswalks and sidewalks, it, by moving it one way, you may reduce something else. You know, you can't get the minimalist amount of traffic or foot traffic across it. So, for example, I, I mean, first and foremost, I think if the sidewalk were to be located similar to Burger King, I think there's a base in there that may make that a little challenging. But, you know, then you're talking about moving the sidewalk across the main driveway on, on Valley, so-
There's already a sidewalk there.
Yeah, so if you're, if you're now pushing people to the side that has the drive-through, you are having them cross the parking lot and then the drive-through, because they would need to cross over the, the actual apron of the driveway where cars are coming in and out.
Across on the driveway, not the parking lot.
Right, so it's the same amount of traffic essentially, because those are the in-and-outs coming out of the driveway that are in the parking lot. So in that instance, you would, if you were coming from the signal, you'd walk, have to walk across the driveway, then across the drive-through to get into the building.
Right, so would you agree that if the sidewalk were not on that side of the driveway before getting to the crosswalk, and that was grass, that would be better for the water?
Well, I, I mean, I can't speak to the water, but I think, I, I think in my review of the plan, I think there is a water feature on that side of the driveway, which would make it more difficult to put a sidewalk there. But as I also said, I, I think a lot of pedestrian traffic may be coming from the intersection. Then you're doing double crossing.
It's over there.
Can I ask him that? Please ask him that. So, so is it safer? It seems like it should be for the pedestrians to cross in the parking lot itself, rather than where cars are going in and out of Valley Road, because they could be hurried trying to beat other cars and stuff, right?
I like the parking lot. You have perpendicular traffic to the crossing more than people, you know, cut-
But slowing down. Should they go from, if the people are trying to get to the restaurant, should they go from west to east inside the parking lot, rather than on the apron of the entrance to the part, to the, to the, to the storefront itself, to the store itself? Because to me, it seems like that's a busier area, where cars are more distracted by crossing Valley Road or, you know, or oncoming traffic or something. They're dealing with other cars.
No, I, I believe I agree with you. I think it's better, deeper and farther removed from them.
I would like it to be on the, on the west, on the east side myself, but I don't think it's as safe.
Yeah, no.
Put it over there.
I, I like the crossing where it is, and within the parking lot. I mean, every parking lot in the world, you have to cross.
You have to cross.
So, so you might as well have a striped location to do so.
Yeah, okay.
Is it possible to have on the exit coming to Valley Road, a, a left turn and a right turn signal, or is that driveway not wide enough, or can it be made wider?
It's, it's not wide enough to accommodate two lanes of egress traffic.
Like, yeah, in the Burger King, yeah.
Just as a rule of thumb, I, I don't always like that, because if you have someone trying to make a left turn, you know, they could creep out a little and block the people trying to make a right turn, you know, like a line-of-sight thing. So I do like one egress lane more often better. I mean, I'm sure there's circumstances where that's different, but more often than not, I prefer to have one lane exiting.
So when they're, when they're leaving the restaurant onto Valley, there's a no-left turn?
No.
No, you're allowed to make a left. You just don't have your own separate lane. There's one lane for left turns and right turns.
Yeah, there's one exit, as opposed to Burger King has the two exits.
Yes, you're right, yep, they do.
But that would entail more in previous coverage and more black tile.
And what I would add is, we did have, I had them do the level of service analysis, and they were getting B and C levels of service with one lane, which was my analytical way of checking, do they need a second lane? If they were getting poor levels of service, Es and Fs, then I'd say, "Well, you have to do something," and the first thing we would look to do would be to provide that separate left and right turn lanes, so two cars could turn out at the same time. Based on the level of service analysis, it's not necessary.
Is it, just in general, the closer you get to an intersection, to a light, the more difficult it is to make a left turn? Is that, is that generally accepted, just because the backup of the, of the, from the light?
Yeah, it would depend on the volume and the queues, but yes, I mean, the closer you get, the, the more likely you are within a queue.
But there are two lanes here, so I guess that might, might-
Yeah, there's the left turn lane that is the only need.
Yeah, no, I mean, obviously, we've all made left turns and right turns out of the existing thing, so we know the existing, and sometimes you can't, like, the gas station can be difficult to make a left turn out of just because the fact that the, if you don't want to go left.
Right.
I mean, if you want to go left, you'd probably go the other way out of the gas station anyway, but-
Any more questions for the traffic person, or the engineer, or the omni-sided planner?
I might have another one for the planner, depending on what the applicant's answer is to this question. Are you primarily relying on your planner's testimony for purposes of establishing the D1 criteria, for purposes of the drive-through variance? Because if you are, I think I need to hear from him again.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, we are, first, we're relying on all the testimony that's gone in.
Right.
And the traffic, of course, obviously.
Traffic, et cetera.
The planning test, the, the under, the, the other testimony underlies the planner's testimony.
Right.
Generally.
Yeah, so did I understand you correctly that your opinion is that because other businesses in the area utilize drive-throughs, that is part of what meets your D-run criteria argument?
Yes, so the enhanced burden of proof for a D1 use variance is that site suitability standard. So we have to look at what's happening around the property. And, again, in this case, we do have all of those drive-throughs. We have a property that's already retrofitted to have a drive-through, so we have the benefit of working with what's there, and we have the benefit of having compatibility. It's not going to stand out as the only drive-through in the area. It's not going to stand out as the only drive-through in the area.
And what about the negative criteria?
The negative criteria, no substantial detriment to the public. Again, we're looking at a property that's remote from residential. Again, that compatibility, I think, goes back to negative criteria. Getting the benefit of keeping onsite circulation the way it is and utilizing that. And also proposing a building that's substantially smaller than what's out there today. No substantial detriment to the zone plan. Drive-throughs are permitted as long as they're for banks or pharmacies. And restaurants are also permitted, so it's not a substantial departure from, from what's permitted in that regard.
Excuse me.
Go ahead.
Our restaurant's permitted?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
By our, by our zone?
Yes.
For drive-throughs?
Not for drive-throughs.
No, that's what I'm talking about. I'm sorry. I thought you were saying drive-throughs.
No, that's, that's, that's the variance.
The use of it is permitted, but with the drive-throughs okay.
Okay, the restaurants without the drive-throughs are permitted. And the drive-throughs without the restaurant are permitted, but the combo, that's your problem.
Right, so basically, we could get, we could get the same exact land use here without the drive-through, but it just so happens that there is a drive-through on the property right now that we're seeking to utilize. And again, compatibility with, with what's around it.
Is there any argument that the refusal would impose undue hardship? Is there any argument in that regard in terms of the?
Use of the property.
Right.
Yeah, we're not building this. We cannot make this project work without a drive-through, so...
Can someone expand on that? And I think the gentleman there did at the last hearing. But if you wouldn't mind.
Are we going in the wrong direction here?
Yeah.
I'm going to, and I apologize, but I want to, because I've, Liz is a good attorney and I'm a decent planner too. So, so, so we know, we know what each other's thinking. The undue hardship, be it for C or D1 use variance, and you're right, D1 use variance, there's three types for deposit criteria. Inherently beneficial use.
Right.
Which this is not, although some may argue, you know, fourth meal's inherently beneficial. Under hardship and particular site suitability, which is what the applicant's relying on. Those are the three alternatives for positive criteria for D1 use variance. The undue hardship, when you refer to that, you're not referring to a hardship to the applicant, like a personal hardship or you can't build your Taco Bell because. That has to be an undue hardship due to something that's specific to the site, topographical conditions, et cetera, that make it in essence unable to strictly comply with the zoning requirements regardless of what you're trying to build. I don't know that they're arguing nothing could ever be here but a Taco Bell with a drive-through.
Well, the drive-through is the...
Yeah, but you can't go by the fact that it affects them.
I mean, and really, we got the planner here. The planner argued a particular site suitability. He picked one out of the three, I guess for a reason. It's fair to assume, but, but, but maybe we want to ask if the planner wants to make an alternative argument for the positive criteria in the D1 use variance under undue hardship? And I guess that's a fair question.
I mean, I want him to put it all out there.
Perhaps I could reiterate my testimony from the first hearing. The owner of this property, all of the inquiries that he had were from restaurants with drive-throughs, specifically Panera, Dunkin' Donuts, and Starbucks. They would all like to move. There are three vacant banks here. We're working on several vacant bank buildings. I mean, banks are, are going out. You don't, you just don't visit a bank anymore.
So maybe that's indicia of the site being particularly well-suited for this type of use, but it might not necessarily be an argument for undue hardship variance unless our planner thinks otherwise.
No, what I would say actually is that goes to the negative criteria, which is, which is why, you know, has the master plan and the zoning not caught up with current conditions?
Yeah, that, that would go with that because the master plan...
The Medici reconciliation.
Back in 2015, banks were not, were a little less, were a little more popular. There was more banks.
You didn't have the, the same type of apps to get, you know, and it was before COVID. I'm not trying to give their testimony, but there were all things that he had, he had, their planner...
Yeah, well, that's important to reiterate that there is, society changes, use changes, preferences change, or ordinances don't always reflect that.
They don't, they're not always at the same, on the same track at the same time.
And for the benefit of our board members, if I may, Mr. Chairman, with Liz. The Medici reconciliation, which is only required for D1 use variances, that's on essentially the second prong of the negative criteria. First prong being no substantial detriment to the public good. Second prong being no substantial impairment of the zone plan, master plan, or zoning ordinance. And that's where for D1 use variances, that second prong, Medici says, and I'm paraphrasing. Why, if it's not on the list of permitted uses, or perhaps worse, it's on the list of prohibited uses, how do you reconcile, literally reconcile, asking for use variance for leave under those circumstances? And one of the key things is what's happened in the interim. Because master plans and zoning ordinances are never ahead of the game altogether. Oftentimes, they're reactive and catching up. Society moves a little quicker. So, and it may be that in 2015, this particular bank with its drive-through was open and operating?
It was.
Yet now?
COVID accelerated technology.
And with that technology, banks are less of, less, a physical branch is less necessary. Also, it accelerated technology and the use of drive-throughs. And look at how many restaurants, you know, everywhere we saw that set up impromptu pickup windows because they couldn't go in. So the three that I mentioned, Starbucks, Dunkin', Panera, and I'll add another, not here, Chipotle. Five years ago, they were not predominantly drive-through restaurants. Now they're only developing drive-throughs.
And the attractiveness of this particular property to potential tenants, as you've described it, is the potential for the drive-through?
Well, yes. It's a, it's a very well-suited site for our type of restaurant, 2,000 square feet. We're actually smaller than most. And if you look at the space behind, the inline space is still struggling, so the mall space. Restaurants are just not oper, they're, they're just not developing without, without drive-throughs today. Banks, completely different. Pharmacies, you're going to start to see pharmacies close because of Amazon and other things that nobody could have contemplated five years ago. I mean, PillPack, all that stuff with people, you know, I do pharmacy work as well. And most people out there today, if it's a maintenance drug, if it's something that they're utilizing regularly, it all, most people are doing it by mail order. Why go to a pharmacy?
Okay.
Can I get one clarif, are we, are you purchasing the property or leasing it?
Oh, leasing it.
You said it's a long-term lease, right? And what's that term?
Twenty years with options, forty years total.
Option.
Five-year options.
Okay, so it's a long-term commitment.
Certainly sufficient for purposes of the applicant having standing to the application.
It'd be interesting if the drive-throughs go away. What happens in 10 years?
They adapt.
You got a lease, you got, you got a lease.
Yeah, who has a question?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I don't, I don't know if it's for Liz or counsel. The fact that there's, shall we say, a double whammy in the zoning ordinance prohibiting this use, how does that affect, or does it affect the weight of evidence necessary to support overcoming that requirement?
I'll throw from the legal, but it's not, I don't know that it's necessarily legal or, or planning them or it's a hybrid. You know, it's, it's how gray does the gray have to be? The, if it's not on the list of permitted uses, by definition, it's a non-permitted use. When you have something that is specifically expressly or expressly listed as prohibited, it doesn't necessarily change the criteria. It's still the D1 use variance, positive, negative, with the Medici reconciliation. However, in your mind, I think it's legitimate to say, well, they went an extra step and explicitly prohibited it, so maybe it needs a little extra oomph in the proof perhaps.
Okay.
Define oomph. I'm not going to...
But it's, whether it's specifically denied or implied, it's still not permitted.
Same, yeah, same criteria, just I think it's fair to assume, we could ask the planners, at least ours, you know, whether, you know, going the extra step of explicitly limited, listing it as prohibited might give a particular indication that there, at least at the time, was something of a greater concern to the, to the ordinance drafter.
Yes, but I, I will agree with Mr. Warner that the municipal, per the, from the perspective of the municipal land use law, you know, what the applicant has to prove, it's, it's the same.
All right.
Can I just ask one clarification point? So their planner used the term substantial departure. Is that a legal term or is that an opinion from their planner? So is there something that in, in the rules that say that when viewing area, which seems to be up to the person defining area, it's not always just adjacent, it's a whole, you can go out a certain area. Is the term substantial departure in the area, what exactly does that mean? Is that an opinion or is that?
May want to ask him. I mean, if he was talking about the first prong of the negative criteria, substantial detriment to the public good, that's the, the...
No, when he was talking about the, the fact that the site had a drive-through, he said that the term, that it's not a substantial departure from the site next door.
Oh, okay.
And I'm just wondering, is the term substantial departure an actual legal term? Or is it just an opinion of yourself? That's all.
So I think like Mr. Warner said, the legal term is substantial detriment to the zone plan and substantial detriment to the public. And I was using the word departure as the rationale for why it is not a substantial detriment.
Okay.
Because it is not a substantial departure.
Okay, perfect. I was just trying to understand is that...
Substantial detriment is, is the phrase and generally it's, you looked at the character of the neighborhood, however it's defined, and is it substantially out of character with the neighborhood? I'm going after that degree, Liz.
Yeah, you go. You'll be a planner in no time. Now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna open it up to the public for comments. Now, I see there is no public, but I want to make sure, so I'm opening it up to public for comments. All right, seeing no comments and he's seen no public, I'm going to close it to the public for comments. Okay, do you have a?
Again, Chairman, I'll, I'll just be brief. We've had two long nights on this application. We appreciate everyone's time and consideration in this regard. We have an application before you, which we think is a very good application. We've got a piece of property that has been vacant for just about four years now. So Bank of America was still operating in 2015, but certainly shut down sometime during the pandemic. We have a proposal before you for a restaurant. It is a design that fits well within the site itself. And yes, we do need a D1 use variance with respect to the drive-through. It has function as a, as a commercial operating business with a drive-through dating back to at least the 1990s. In 1991, that original Summit Bank that was constructed on this site. You heard from our planner and testimony about surrounding land use. We have another queue I saw, another queue right next to us with a drive-through. We've got gas stations. We've got other uses that we think are quite compatible. We appreciate the comments that we made. We've made a few. We made a number of concessions just in terms of building materials and things and a number of conditions that we agreed to based on your comments, based on the rest of our neighbor, to put a fence up just to provide some additional streaming between the two properties. We are very anxious to come, Taco Bell, very anxious to be a part of Long Hill Township, part of your community, providing another, another food option here in your community. And we are hopeful that the board will find a fit and grant approval to this application.
Thank you.
And thank you for your time. Thank you again for leaving tonight on a special day to argue with the council.
Oh, thank you. Steve, would you go over some of the conditions?
Certainly, with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I'll do the relief sought and the permission, and the conditions, as I understand, are to be stipulated to. The relief is preliminary and final site plan approval. A D1 use variance for a drive-up window with a restaurant as opposed to a bank or pharmacy, which particular D1 use is explicitly prohibited in the ordinance, as well as C variance relief for a maximum front yard setback of 50 feet, excuse me, maximum front yard setback of 79 feet, whereas 50 feet is required. Is the maximum permitted? I have 79, not 80.
Yes.
The accessory side yard setback to the trash enclosure of 4.3 feet versus 10 feet required. Accessory rear yard setback to the trash enclosure of zero feet on the property line, whereas five feet is required. Signage, maximum number of wall signs, two, whereas one max is permitted. Wall sign area, 41.25 square feet, whereas 18 square feet is the maximum permitted. Ground mounted and wall sign appearance. The signage, well, we may have a signage that is either carved or sandblasted, painted wood signs or having the appearance thereof. I.e. the home. So it's arguable whether that relief is necessary or not, or to what extent, if at all. And that is all the variance relief. The conditions as stipulated to, if it's a grant, because there's no conditions if it's a denial. The conditions, if it's a grant of approval, as stipulated to by the applicant, include all those conditions stipulated to as set forth in the Phillips Price Planning Memo, the Van Cleef Engineering Menu, Memo, Menu, there you go. And the Bright View Engineering Memo, as well as stormwater management. The existing outlet control structure can be mod, should be modified to accommodate increase in impervious coverage per the engineer.
That's been confirmed with the revised submission?
Already done.
Already completed?
The supplemental landscaping to plug holes along the east sideline with the Burger King Lot 7, subject to review and approval of planner, which may have already been done in the plan.
That's part of our revised middle copy sticker and other comments.
Right, so Liz will let us know if it's sufficient. If not, she has the review and approval authority there. Lighting compliance, but for, all compliance but for the hours of operation, which were as requested. I can think it was midnight during the week and 2:00 a.m. Friday, Saturday. I think you agreed to provide the terms or a redacted version of the long-term lease. We just got the 20-year representation, but I don't know if that's anything that the board needs at this point. The truck turning exhibits are conditions of approval, particularly in light of the testimony provided by our traffic engineer. The applicant will maintain through either the existing easement or some other county-recorded instrument if necessary, an unobstructed access and right to use the driveway over Lot 6 for entry from and exit to Plainfield Road. In other words, there'll be a maintenance of an unobstructed and recorded access way. Downlit signage, applicant responsible for maintenance of the fence, the five-foot-tall board-on-board fence along the Burger King property line. Fibrous cement with gray brick texture, substantially similar to Exhibit A7, was it? Per the recommendation of our traffic engineer, an increase in the Plainfield Road directional signage to, I have 28 by 30 inches because it was gone from 18 by 20, so I figured you were going 28 to by 30 or thereabouts.
I think if you put it in an approximate way.
Approximate, yeah. I always have an approximate. And elimination of the wall art on the rear southern, southerly exposure or southerly elevation. And I think that's all we have.
Thank you.
So if it is a grant, I assume, unless I'm told otherwise, it will be a motion for all that relief with all those stipulated to conditions. And as the board is well aware, with a D variance, it requires the affirmative vote of at least five of the seven board members who are voting for approval. And since we have a full complement, I believe, this evening, our alternate one and two are not voting. I'm done.
Okay. Tom, would you like to start your deliberation?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a very interesting case in that it goes against our master plan from 2015. As was well pointed out, things have changed since then, although it seems like just yesterday. Some things on my list here is, well, the first thing that bothers me about this application is the fact that you want to stay open until 2:00 a.m., which doesn't fall in line with this township, this area. And I know some people were saying that, you know, if we're not making any money, we're not doing any business, we're going to close earlier. Well, I'd like to see that it, that your, your time, your hours kind of stay in line with what we experience around here. And usually by 11 o'clock... And usually by 11 o'clock at night, the bars are closed, the restaurants are closed, and we don't want to have people coming in from other areas to come just to your Taco Bell. And whatever that may cause, good or bad, I don't think this town wants it. That being said, I'll just talk through a couple of quick issues. Your setback of 79 feet versus 50 feet max, you have water retention there. It makes mathematical sense to me to leave it alone. It's working. So, that's, I don't think a problem. Wall art versus a scheme, I'll go to my colleague's point, it doesn't really fit with our neighborhood. I'm not a fan of it, but do I think it's enough to shoot down this application? You'll see in a minute. Your drive-up in this location, which I think this is what it's all hinging on, I'll put it on record as saying is if this was a different piece of property, if you were across the street or down the road, I would have a much, I would have a different opinion than I do have. But the fact that you're right next to already permitted Gas N Go and also a Burger King, I wasn't talking about, so people from Burger King don't think I was calling you a Gas N Go. But you're right in a, in a nexus of similar, similarly situated businesses. And that it's been testified that this, the, the drive-through is not really going to cause a burden on traffic more than really any business would. I mean, it could be an art supply shop for all we know. Based on these points, the negatives and the positives, I believe I will be with the, with the change of the maximum hours till 2:00 p.m., uh, 2:00, sorry, a.m., I think I will be in favor of this, of this application.
Okay, Gary.
Well, I, I agree with everything my colleague, Tom, said here, and I'm not quite sure how all of a sudden something that, you know, we've, we've, there's been accommodations made to building materials, to signs, wall art, whatever we were gonna call it, but that's not being made for the hours. So, I don't see what's the, when that happens, unless it's happening right now. I see your finger up.
I was just waiting for my moment, because I did not want to interrupt.
Because, you know, I, I, I'm not necessarily a fan of, you know, the, the hours.
We would, we would amend and have a closing hour at midnight on weekends as well.
Okay, so everything would be consistent in midnight?
So, we'll be consistent and, you know, it may very well be that during the week it shuts earlier, but we're consistently just asking from midnight across the board.
Okay, all right, thank you.
That's it for my deliberation.
Okay. Go ahead.
Sure.
I definitely agree with, with my colleagues. I think, and again, I'm, I'm not sure that the argument was necessarily made, although it was brought up on occasion, I guess, in relation to. In relation to the zoning ordinances and the change in, in kind of the, what, the situation. I, I think one thing we, we all know exists, and we don't really talk, haven't really, as I said, talked about, is, is just this town and a lot of towns around this are, is seeing a lot of vacancies, a lot of empty storefronts, a lot of non, for lack of a better word, useful land, because there's just no, and, and so the zoning ordinance, and the, applicant has testified, I, I'm not sure how we can, I, I guess they're under oath, so they, we have to accept this as the truth. We don't have the, the landlord to ask, but the applicants testify that really the only interest in this site has been from restaurants and from restaurants that are looking for drive-through. So, it, it does seem to be a suitable use, or the only suitable use, I guess, for this. I mean, we could say, we're gonna reject this and have nobody there. And, and we could say no to everything, and that's our right. But I, I don't, I, I think in terms of the negative criteria, in terms of, you know, what, what, I, I, I'll, I'll skip over the C variances, although I know we can't skip over them, but I think that in discussion, that they've already been said, you know, what my opinions on those are, and I agree with my colleagues. But in terms of the D1 use variance, which I think is the, is the most critical one here, I think that they've shown there is a site suitability, because really the site isn't suitable, unfortunately. Maybe we would like it to be suitable for something else, but it's not. And, and so I personally would rather see the site being used for something than nothing. And so there, and I know that they've made some concessions regarding the, the, you know, their presentation, their, how they look. I, I think that actually the, the one variance, the C variance that they have to get for the setback from, the maximum setback, actually kind of benefits them in some way, because while we might not love how it looks, and I personally don't have a problem necessarily, I think, with how it looks as much as some people, I think the fact that it is set further back kind of takes away from that. It's not sitting right on the road and, and right in front of everybody to say, oh, wow, that really sticks out like a sore thumb. So, with all those things, I, I would be supportive of this application.
Thank you. Jerry?
I, I do appreciate everything that my colleagues have said. Actually, first, let me thank the applicants. I, I think you guys did a great job, very professional. You guys are all top of your game. I really appreciate that. The information was excellent. You did make accommodations where you thought you could, where we asked for that. And, and you did provide good, good information, and I, and I have no doubts about your integrity, that all of the information was completely honest and, and everything. I think that was great. Thank you very much for that. However, I can't support the, the application in the current context, especially the facade. It's something I can't get my arms around. It's so different than everything else around here. I mean, there is some variations in color and structure and, you know, and roof slants and whatever, but for the most part, it is, is, it, it will stand out to me like a sore thumb, especially the colors, the art on the outside. When I go to a museum, I want the art to be on the inside. And, you know, whoever wants to appreciate it can go inside and, and appreciate that, but it's not for everybody. So, we don't want something that stands out. I've, I've taken the time to drive around to other Taco Bells and just see what they look like. And, you know, they stand out, whether, there's one in Bergen County I went to, and it's on a, it was on a busy road across from the county VOTAC, and it was just, it was a very busy area, but yet it's, it's like a beacon, the coloring scheme of it. And maybe that's your, that, maybe that's your goal, is to draw people in there, let people know it's there. But for me, I think enough of the app, people are gonna find it on the app, people are gonna find it on Valley Road that drive by, back and forth every day. Like you said, there's, you know, most of these people are people that are in the area, just stopping in, stopping on the way home, they know it's there. They're gonna find you, whether you have a red brick building, or a brown brick building, or a, a purple building. That's my opinion. I'm not in that business, you know your business, I don't. So, but the fact of the matter is, I can't get my arms around a purple building. I just can't do it in our, in our downtown business district. It just does not fit with me. If you, you know, agree to comply with, we talked about section, I think it was 152-3, facade treatments and stuff like that, I would be all in favor of this. And just like limit the exterior to one or two materials, that's what that, that's what that codes, that part of the code says, but also talks about colors. And so, to me, that, that would, that would definitely get my interest, right? But no wall art, no purple, I, I just can't do it. The hours of operation, I still think midnight is too late. I was definitely not even close to being in favor of 2:00 a.m. or 1:00 a.m., but even midnight, it's not what we're drawing here. It's not, we want people to come, like somebody else mentioned, to come from other towns, when the bars close in other towns at 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning, then everybody come here for Taco Bell. That's a thing. People follow the Taco Bell closings. They, they go from bars to Taco Bells. And we just don't want to draw that traffic here every Friday and Saturday night. It'd just be a nuisance for our police, for our residents. I don't think we need it. For, for our residents that use Taco Bell, they're probably gonna be shut down by 11 o'clock. So, 11 o'clock, to me, would be fine. There's one thing I forgot to bring up during the, during the application process, and it's the, you're gonna replace the fence, you said, between Burger King and your property?
No, there is no existing.
Oh, no existing fence, you're gonna install a fence?
I put a fence up, and that was a Burger.
Thank you, but there's, there's some arborvitae or some other type of tree there, and that looks like it has some kind of blight. I think that's happening, the arborvitae's in our area.
Yeah, I thought it was actually one of the comment letters. We'll have to address anything.
Okay. But that'll, obviously.
Everybody's been maintaining, I would imagine.
Right. That'll be taken care of though, right? Because there's some major dead spots in there.
Yeah, I think that was a step in, in Liz's memory.
It was, okay, sorry, because I, I don't remember the last time we talked about that, if we did at all, but, so, so that's really my comments. I'm sorry I can't support it with, with that facade, but I, but that, to me, is a deal breaker. Everything else, I'm fine with, the, fine with the use. I understand you, your model drives you to, or pushes you towards a drive-through, that, that makes sense. But, you know, I can't support it in the, in the current facade treatment.
Thank you. Scott?
I appreciate everything my other colleague said here. I appreciate your testimonials here. I'm kind of torn. One, I'm glad it was addressed that it's not gonna be 2:00 a.m., because that does not work in our small town here. I'm glad that was addressed. The fact that there was a drive-through here, and we're just changing the building, and it is a drive-through, I'm fine with. I hate to see empty buildings. We have several in this town, banks are moving out. There's also other vacant facilities in this town, and I hate to see that. So, in that part, I'm in favor of. I have personally two boys that would be excited for this, to be honest with you. But getting back to business, I know this is a franchise. I happen to work for a franchise. I know there's certain stipulations, and I appreciate that you have some variances that you can work with to accommodate our town. Not many franchises do have that. And I definitely would want to see the brick facade. I agree with Jerry on the artwork. I'm not a fan of the artwork. I don't know what that does for the restaurant itself, but I'm not part of your franchise. Definitely the rear one being eliminated is fine. The other ones by the drive-through, it might stimulate the kids who come in through the drive-through, and it's gonna be blocked by a fence. I don't see that to be so much of a problem. I'm just gonna make this short. I'm for this application with all the changes that were said, and that's all I have to say.
Tom? Tom?
I'm not, uh.
Oh.
He's an alternate.
Oh, he is an alternate.
But, but he is free.
No. You can deliberate if he wants to.
You can deliberate, but you can't vote.
Go ahead.
Correct, counsel? I can comment, but I.
You can deliberate.
All right, I wasn't thinking a moment about, fine. Well, I certainly was impressed with the quantity and quality of the evidence presented here tonight, and the last episode also. For myself, I too don't like to see empty buildings. But the flip side is the purple building. I, I don't quite, I can't, that, to me, this doesn't fit in with what goes in Long Hill Township. So, those are my, the 2:00 a.m., oh, I, I have to tell you, Taco Bell's my go-to fast-food restaurant. But I think it was open till 4:00 a.m.
24/7.
So, but I'm putting that aside. I guess, I guess overall, the aesthetics are what bothers me, that it just doesn't fit. It doesn't seem to fit with the master plan, doesn't seem to fit with what the idea was behind all the zoning. The, I understand that it doesn't.
Be closer to the microphone.
I'm sorry. I realize it doesn't make any difference that you have a double whammy, so to speak, in opposing this, but on the other hand, there must be some reason that the, the drafters put that in there. So, having said all of that, I would, I would come down in, in opposition to this proposal, if I were allowed to vote.
I'm sorry, Jessica?
Well, so, I would say that Mr. Rosenberg basically covered every point that, that I wanted to make, and I agree with everything he said, but I would add to that, that in struggling with the, the D1 criteria, I think that it's worth pointing out that this particular property meets, in my opinion, the criteria in this application, but there are many other banks that may be vacant with drive-throughs in different locations that I think would fail in that regard. But I appreciate all the testimony and clarification on the, the D variance points. I agree. I think the C2 criteria met on the additional variance requests, and I'm for the application.
Tony?
I, I think that I'm in the minority.
Your mic's.
Uh, that one's not working.
Oh, that's.
It wasn't working.
Oh, it's not?
Yeah, so it wasn't working before. So, I, I actually don't have as big of an issue with the facade because of the change to the gray brick being the predominance of the exterior. I think if you look at the renderings that they had, that most of it now would be that gray brick that would fit in with the other buildings in the area. I think it's also, some of the other buildings in the area are also 40, 50 years old at this point, so the construction type and quality and, and practices today are slightly different than what they were for the buildings that are in the immediate vicinity of the property. To the point of the setback, I think that the property would be set back enough that the purple top-line trim wouldn't be as visible as if this was looking for a variance to be closer to the road. I think that if you're driving by and it's 10 feet off the road, it, it would really pop, but to their point of also, to their fencing, of trying to make things more blend in, I think that a lot of the changes that they made, that the board has asked for, has made this application much more amenable to me. So, I would have been in favor if I had the opportunity to vote.
Thank you. Well, after hearing all my colleagues talk, I, I do appreciate everything the applicant has said, and the way they presented it, and their experts. I think it was very cohesive and very inclusive and comprehensive. I, I'm in favor of the application. I, I, I'm not as worried about the master plan specifically excluding drive-throughs, because I think that was a different time, that was almost 10, oh, it's eight, nine years ago. I, it, it's, it was a different mindset back then, it was different usage back then. Brick-and-mortar stores weren't as, as passe as they are now. I, it would be hard pressed to find a, a, a lot of uses for land now, unless you're building apartment buildings or condos. But the, I, I think the applicant has been very flexible in their agreement to the board's suggestions about the outside facade, the sign, and we appreciate that. The only thing I would say is I'd like the hours, if you would, if you could agree to this, to be normally 11 o'clock and have Friday and Saturday 12 o'clock, because I don't think you're gonna get much business at 12 during the week. But if, if I, if that would be something they could agree to, I, that would make me happy. But I would be in favor of this. I, I think they've put a lot of work into this and a lot of thought in the building, so.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize, but as procedural matter, I was just informed by my colleague to my left, perhaps this is a quick motion.
Yes.
To extend beyond the 10:30.
Sorry, I didn't even realize that. Yeah, 'cause I have a motion to extend the meeting to 11 o'clock.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, boy, I lost track of the time, thank you.
No, no, well, thank you. Too much fun.
Aye.
The, the, so, I believe we have all deliberations.
Can you get a, an answer on him?
Yeah, can we get an answer for the 11 and 12 o'clock?
I've been texting back and forth with the owners in Texas, and they said midnight.
Okay, all right.
And, you know, I think that it's likely that during the week, they probably will close earlier, but they.
So, not beyond midnight?
Yeah, but they're, they feel that 2:00 a.m.
I, I was suggesting.
I, I understand.
Yeah.
And I appreciate it as a quiet night.
And I think that in reality, they're gonna wind up closing earlier.
I, I, I don't disagree.
They're not gonna have somebody paying there to sit there with no business.
I don't disagree with you, Chairman. Thank, thank you.
Okay, all right. Now, yes.
Can I, I just, I, I'm sorry, and I don't even know if this, but when we say midnight, that's the, does the, did we say that the restaurant closes, the doors close before, and it's just the?
Yes.
Well, originally, what we had proposed with the restaurant was midnight, and the drive-through would stay open. They're just agreeing to a blanket midnight. It, it may well be that the restaurant is closed at 11, because they do clean up and do other, you know, things inside, but the information I just got was. But I, the information I just got was a twelve o'clock with a whole bunch of exclamation points.
So that's a maybe.
I I think they're gonna have to learn from their own, uh, but uh, uh, all right, you have.
So, uh, well, based on deliberation, well, let's see what the motion is, but based on.
Do I have a motion to approve the application?
With all the stipulations.
With all the stipulations that have been read. You move?
With stipulations, second.
Okay.
Can I hear the stipulations on the time, because did we?
Yeah, it was twelve midnight.
Okay.
Twelve midnight, both restaurant, drive-through, uh, all, each, every night, each night, all nights, every night.
Okay, so the motion was made by Mr. Rosenberg and seconded by Vice Chairman Grosskopf.
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Grosskopf?
Aye.
Mr. Aronio?
No.
Ms. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis?
Yes.
Mr. Hain?
Yes.
Chairman, correct?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations.
Good luck.
We still have fifteen more.
I thought we had a good thing going there.
What's coming up?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Lots of stuff.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. I wanna hear what's coming up, so everybody knows.
Uh, next week, we have two residential's and a, a commercial, uh, that I will be sending out to everybody tomorrow.
Three? Yeah, three.
Three.
And what's, what about the next one? What's the next?
Uh, the next one, I thought, is C.S.H., the Assistant.
Okay, all right.
So you need me?
All right.
This is the twentieth?
Thank you.
The twentieth?
Yes.
Well, but next week is a, oh, you're not.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn?
Second? Do I have a second to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
Aye.